Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 25th City Council meeting. Let the record state, all council members are present. And the meeting is, we do have a quorum established. And we will like to lead off if everyone will join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Noah, will you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we okay there on technicalities? We're good? Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to our city attorney for closed session report.
Yes, good evening. Prior to tonight's regular session, councilmen in closed session to discuss with the legal counsel anticipated litigation, the two items that are possible exposure to litigation that exist is First American Title Company, First California Bank in the City of Morro Bay, and the second item is Burton's and the City of Morro Bay. As to both these items, no action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Great, thank you. We'll go into council reports and announcements, and I'll start off with a couple. First of all, I know our friend from AGP came out and kind of coached everybody on speaking, so that was great. I appreciate that. I wanted to throw that out and some thanks to him for that. I think he prepped you on slides. If there's slides and everything, just come see him, and that'll give him a heads up. And then I wanted to give a shout out to our, the success on the K-9 walk for our police department. And with that, I'll turn it over to my right. Nancy, if you have some announcements?
Sure. I have three short ones. First, the city's 50th anniversary subcommittee planning the kickoff party started meeting today and last week, and we have great plans underway that should involve hopefully everyone in Morro Bay, and we'll all have a really good time kicking off our 50th anniversary. Also, Dahlia Days, the city flower. Dahlia Days will be September 6th and 7th this year at the community center. So be watering your dahlias, take good care of them, because we have tables and tables of Morro Bay residents and anybody else who wants to, who bring their dahlias for display. So you just cut them off like this, bring them down, and we'll put them in a vase. My last announcement, don't forget to join us Friday at 5 o'clock for the tippecop dinner. It's gonna be great. I understand we're gonna get lousy service and good food.
Thanks, Nancy. Noah?
Yeah, thank you. I just had a couple of announcements. The first one is to report on a tour they took last week of the Morro Bay Cayucas wastewater treatment plants. And this tour was focused on our major maintenance and repair plan, which is being developed to help us ensure that as we build the plan for the new plant, to add a site to be determined, that we can operate our plant safely and efficiently. So we toured the plant with representatives from the Cayucas CSD and their staff, as well as ours, and it was very informative. And I just wanted to extend the invitation to anyone in the public who would like to arrange a tour, that our operator, Mr. Keough, is very welcoming on that tour, whether it's a handful of you or a larger group. So feel free to give him a call at 772-6274, and that's Mr. Keough, and he'll take you on a tour that'll show you more than you may want to see, but you should see. So please do it. And then the other item, unless, Christine, were you planning on announcing the fourth?
I was.
Go for it. Oh, go for it.
Is that it?
Yeah, as long as you mention the bike shop being open, so you can tune your bike up.
Yes, you mentioned that.
Okay. We are, of course, are celebrating our Morro Fourth Celebration, which has become a very exciting, family-oriented event. And this year is going to be similar in years past to kicking off with the skate race at 10:00 AM. And that's gonna set very likely a new world record and send our own Jack Smith off on his, I believe, fourth skateboard trek across the country, which is a fundraising event for a couple of different causes of his. And that will basically then lead into the organization of the Bike Parade, which is what I'll mention and then let you go with the rest. And that is the largest bike parade in the County of San Luis Obispo. And we'll start at The Rock with good organization and escort with the PD, and do a rolling parade all the way down to Tylen's Park, which is where the rest of the celebration will go on and the picnics. And I just wanted to bring that up, because we do have our new bike store open now on the corner of Morro Bay Boulevard in Maine, or right in that area. And Dave's ready to go ahead and tune your bikes up or sell you a new bike if you're interested in getting ready and participating in the ride. So, thanks for that.
All right, thanks, Noah. George?
Yeah, let's, it, 4th of July is coming, and this is a time where sometimes there's accidents. So let's be careful out there what we're doing and use our heads. People like to shoot off their guns and things like that. Just really be careful. And this committee has worked very, very hard on this 4th of July over the years, and they put on quite a show. So let's sit, get down there and support them, and, you know, tell them how much we appreciate what they have done for us. That Bike Parade is pretty cool.
All right, Alan, thanks, George. Christine?
Okay, I guess we can squeeze in one more 4th of July announcement, since this is the last meeting before the 4th. So the, I think a lot of people come down for the music and the free music and events at the park, at Tylen's Park. So here's the lineup. In the afternoon, starting at 1, we'll have Zongo All-Stars, a local favorite, and then Back Bay Betty comes on at 4:30. And then right up to fireworks time, starting at 7, is Rio Salinas with Louis Ortega. So all super terrific local bands and musicians, so that's happening all day at the park. It's also free, all ages. It's alcohol-free as well. But if that, if you're looking for alcohol, then there is one place you can get it that does help the 4th of July. There's the last few days for the wine raffle. One in five people will win a prize. If you'd like to be part of the fundraising, which it does take over $40,000 every year to put the event on for the community and for our guests, then stop by at Stacks and get your wine raffle ticket. And they're $100 per ticket, but you win 100 bottles of wine, and you can certainly throw in five or six friends together and split, split it up. But now getting back to more serious things, there is continuing, it's a very successful program thus far, continuing at Delmar Elementary this summer, our the free lunch program. So it's absolutely open to any child of any age between 0 and 18. Don't have to live here in Morro Bay or attend school in Morro Bay. And it will, goes on every day, five days a week, Monday through Friday, from 11:30 until 12:30 at Delmar Elementary, and it goes until August 9. And I stopped by last week, and the meals looked delicious and very healthy. And they are, however, for children only at this point. So, thank you, and that ends my announcements.
Thank you, Christine. I'll close with a couple other announce and kind of preparation for tonight's meeting. Obviously, we have a lot of people here. Some people are here just to speak on the aquarium issue, so I'm gonna go over some of the ground rules and how everything's gonna work out tonight. We do have speaker slips in the back for the aquarium item only, so we ask that you fill out a speaker slip. You can select one, two, or three minutes. Those people who select one minute will be, will go, will speak first. We'll open it up to, we'll have a couple presentations at the beginning of the meeting, then we'll go to public comment. Public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. Following that, we'll go to our consent agenda. There'll be public comment for that. Then we'll go into, we have two public hearing items, and then we get into new business. The new business, item D1, which is the lease site 6970, 6970W, will be the item for the aquarium. And I wanted to go over some, and it's, it's in our agenda, and it's on our speaker slips, and I'll just read this to you, and basically, it's just a message for, for public comment. "To increase the effectiveness of public comment period, the following rule shall be followed. When recognized by the mayor, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments to be limited to three minutes." For the aquarium, it looks like we have enough room to get everybody in, so we look like we're pretty good on that. "All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not any individual member thereof. The council respectfully requests that you refrain from making any slanderous or profane or personal remarks against any elected official, commission, or staff." And the other thing to remember, tonight, we're speaking about a lease site. We're not speaking about the Tyler's. We're, that's, that's the topic of the night. "Any disruptive activities that substantially interfere with the ability of the city council to carry out its meeting will not be permitted, and offenders will be requested to leave the meeting." Your, your participation in this council meeting is welcome, and courtesy will be appreciated. And while this is, you know, we're, we're so privileged to be able to have this format to where we can have our public input, I would also ask that, you know, while people are speaking at the, during public comment, that the audience refrain from any, any comments while they're speaking. Allow that person their time to speak without any interruptions. So I appreciate you for, for listening to that. And with that, we'll go on to public presentations, and we have Summer Expression that is out there, that will be our business spot of the night. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself and my exciting new business, Summer Expressions Hair Salon. My name is Summer Burchelle, and I have created a new salon formerly known as Donna's or Salon by the Bay. Bless you. Located across the street from Village Cleaners on Napa Street. I'm very proud of what I have, what I and a few loved ones have created with Summer Expressions Hair Salon. We've completely remodeled the salon from floor to ceiling. We gave the salon a more spacious and brighter atmosphere. With the industrial decor, we welcome men, women, and our teens and kids. The salon is open Tuesday through Friday, 9 to 5, and I welcome walk-ins. Saturday and Mondays, I am there, 9 to 1. Sunday morning appointments are available. I invite our locals to come and see the completion of our remodel and see our full retail line of retail of Redken products, from hair care products for men and chemically-treated hair, and also for thinning hair, to styling products for the fashionable crew-cut gels or our shags that need a root lift for volume. And our favorite product is our diamond oil for strength and shine. We have a few local artists that also display their jewelry. The salon offers cable, internet, and Wi-Fi, and of course, excellent tea and coffee, and all sorts of magazines. In addition, the salon has four parking spots available right in front of our Curb Appeal Salon. To introduce myself and the other stylists briefly, I have been doing hair for just five years now, but I'm third-generation stylist. I specialize in razor cuts for all clientele, and I also welcome new clients with special needs of color and cut. My family has Sincal Roofing here in Morro Bay, and I've learned from my father and brother, the key to success is great customer service and great product and great price. And I maintain that belief every day when I open the salon. Linda Cosse has been doing hair for over 35 years, 14 of which are at this location, and she specializes in highlights and perms and services many of our local families. Sharon Vaughn, the previous owner of Salon by the Bay, has been at this location for 35 years as well. And she services our seniors and businesswomen. She can do a mean shampoo set and precision cut. She often speaks about retirement, but she loves what she does. We're looking to expand the hair salon to offer other new, exciting services. We are planning to add nail services, and we are looking for a manicurist to join our professional, friendly, and fun staff. We're also planning to add ladies' night out and beauty parties and more. So, thank you very much for this opportunity, and please stop by and meet all of us ladies. We welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Now we'll move on to our SlowCog presentation, and I'll give, shall give a plug-in for our SlowCog representatives as a, as an opportunity to serve on the SlowCog board myself. SlowCog has been a great partner in our county, and we're glad to have you here introduce the, the Mobility Master Plan tonight. Viska and, and, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Gaiska Velazquez. I'm the North Coast Transportation Planner with the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments, and I'm here representing SlowCog as a whole today, not necessarily issues on the North Coast. In fact, if you notice, it is a US 101 study, and some of you may be wondering, why do we care? Well, please raise your hand if you have never used the US 101. Okay, fair enough. So, so as, as county residents, most of us have used the US 101 at some point or often. And this study not only will look at the, the highway itself, but the corridors, the corridor, including frontage roads, excuse me, bicycle transit, all, all kinds of uses along the corridor. So specifically, we're going to be looking at the corridor from, okay, good. Last time I did this presentation, the slides were totally out of order, so I just wanted to be sure. So we're looking again at multimodal. Specifically, we need good stakeholder involvement, and this will help us establish regional funding strategies based on the priorities that come out of the planning effort. Again, this, the project area covers the entire county, so it's county line to county line along the US 101. And again, we're looking at roads, roadways, transit, park and ride lot, bicycle and pedestrian networks, everything in between. And this study, we received a grant, SlowCog received a grant from Caltrans as a partnership planning. So Caltrans is on board, and we're doing this together, but we're also doing it with the, the partners in the county, so it's City of Morro Bay, City of Paso Robles, all, all seven cities, the five county board of supervisors. Everybody's on board here with this. The technical approach is twofold. First, we're going to be looking at existing plans and studies. We recognize that a lot has been done on the corridor already. We've looked at quite a bit, but we've never looked at it entirely as one long set, again, county line to county line. So we're gonna be looking at existing plans and studies, doing a physical inventory, taking the public input that comes in, doing a whole regional analysis. Now, at this point, we don't expect to collect any new data. We won't be counting cars, anything at this point. Once deficiency areas are identified, so we certainly want to hear, I have a problem with this, or this is always backed up, or whatever it is, once we realize that there are areas of trouble, then we will narrow down and look at those more indepthly. We do, even with a $450,000 grant, we do not have time to look at every inch of the corridor and determine what to do over the next 50 years. We really wanna see where the problems are. Is, is the, is it a multimodal problem? Is it a safety concern? Whatever it is. At that point, we may need to collect new data, but at this point, we really just wanna take a broader look. One of the things that we will need to determine from our elected officials and, and other advisory bodies, as well as the input that comes from the public, is what performance measures to measure. You can look at this list, there's a lot. We cannot look at everything. So that's another thing that we're going to need direction again for in the project. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Kendall Flynn to tell you about the public outreach process we're going to undergo with this project.
Thank you very much, Gaiska. I'd like to say, first of all, I'm so excited to see so many people in the room. We would like all of you to come to our meeting on Saturday. It's not quite as exciting as the aquarium, but who doesn't wanna talk roadways, right? Come on, that's, that's some fun stuff. Anyway, we're trying to make this very easy for people to get engaged in the process, because we know that, let's face it, transportation planning is almost as exciting as that. So what we've done with this is basically, we're making presentations at all the community advisory councils, all the city councils, but we've established a project website called SlowCogConnectingCommunities.com. You can go on this at any time. All of the project information is on there. There's background material about the, the effort itself and whatnot. It has information about our upcoming meetings. It has copies of the presentations, and also a number of the background documents. One of the things that's on here, though, that's especially neat, is an interactive visualization tool. And I don't know, how many of you have ever used Google Maps to find something 'cause you're lost? Well, on this particular map, you can click on it and tell us where the yuckiest traffic is, or where you'd like to see more amenities on a park and ride lot, where bike or pedestrian access is more challenging. And this is going through the entire county, so you have four maps to choose from. It's available 24/7, and you can comment on that at any time when it's convenient for you. In terms of next steps of what's gonna be happening moving forward here, this part right is really the visualization portion of it. We're trying to figure out where the major problems are in that 70-mile corridor. We had two public outreach meetings down in South County, one in Pismo, and then we had one actually up in Natascadero. Here, this next week, we're gonna be doing the workshop in San, San Luis Obispo at the City-County Library. Now, what's good about this particular workshop, you do not have to sit through a PowerPoint presentation for endless hours. It's going to be an open house kind of a thing, where you can come in when it's convenient for you, participate in interactive polling, take a look at the visualization tools, talk to people about the regional transportation plan, as well as the mobility plan, and another project, which is the aesthetic study. And all these things are gonna be used to help form the regional transportation plan, which will be, you'll be hearing more about in earnest, I would say, as we go into the next year. So these concurrent efforts, again, it's not wasting taxpayer money. We are in fact working collaboratively with all these different groups in the cities to make sure that this effort on the mobility plan, in fact, helps inform that. So, once again, both for council, for elected, for everyone who's here, everyone's coming Saturday, right? 'Cause it's the most exciting thing to do. And if you can't make it on Saturday, at least make us feel good by visiting our website. If you have any questions, we're here to answer those for you this evening.
And there are flyers in the back that you can take home with the, the website address, as well as information on Saturday's event. And we do hope to see you there.
And you can sign up for eBlast and get news from us, 'cause I know you're gonna want more information like that, right? 'Cause you need more mail.
All right, thank you. There's a lot of energy with you two. All right, thanks very much. Okay, with that, we'll start with public comment, and I'll follow up with one more, one more comment. We will take, we'll go through public comment, the agenda, and our, our hearing item, and then we'll take a short recess before our business items. So we'll do that. At this point, we can open up for a public comment for items not on the agenda, and I think Hillary's gonna start us off.
Hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. What kind of story is so inspiring that it must be told?
Hillary, can I, can you state your name, please, for the record?
My name is Hillary Grant.
Thank you.
And I'm the writer and producer of Botso, a not-for-profit theatrical documentary about Botso Corashelli, a beloved musician, sculptor, and teacher here in Morro Bay. Botso is now 91 years old. He has taught more than 10,000 children since he moved here in the mid-1950s. Per Botso's wish, all profits from the distribution of this movie will go toward local music scholarships for kids. The movie is finished. We now want to invite everyone in Morro Bay to help us launch the movie, because we have been invited to the main international film festival in three weeks. So to that end, Botso will screen at the Bay Theater on July 6th and July 7th at noon, $10 at the door. So here's a short trailer, just to whet your appetite.
And the later on, when it gets to the second page, oh, it comes right through. It's a tragedy.
I've been asked, how is my teaching is different? I do transfer myself into them, and they transfer themselves into me. That's the only answer I can find.
Botso is a phenomenon.
I thought of him as a musician, but then I came here and there were sculptures everywhere. And then I discovered that he taught music here, and then I discovered he had taught people I knew, and he started them as kids, and these were people with big jobs. And I thought, wow.
It's an interesting experience. I don't think I've ever met anybody quite that way. I've read people like that.
He's a person who came out of complete adversity.
Living under the dictatorship of Stalin at the height of his powers, and then by misfortune going into Germany when Hitler was at his supreme strength.
My dad, he came into the room, and he told me lots of things I live by today. He said, every time you go to bed, ask yourself, have you done enough?
Not just Botso teaching us the notes of the music, he taught us about life.
I like to teach my students that suffering is part of the life. If you suffer, you appreciate happiness twice as much.
I mean, he destroyed my family, but hatred doesn't bring anything.
A lot of Americans and even Europeans simply don't know where Georgia is.
I'm sorry to hear it. Hillary?
Which is pretty amazing to me.
All right, thank you for that, Hillary.
I'll take it.
My name is Elizabeth Scott Graham, and I'm going to make a specific request of the city council. Our goal is to find a distributor who will buy the rights to the Botso film, where we hope it will be shown internationally in theaters, schools, youth symphonies, regular symphonies, and on Netflix. A group of volunteers has worked for over eight years now to make this film. It's done, and it's paid for through generous donations of private people throughout the county, and hundreds of those people. And we believe that we can get at least, hold on to your hats, $1 million for this film. And the reason we believe that is, I have been involved with this project now. I'm, I'm a newcomer. I've only been on this seven and a half years. But what we, where was I? Oh, the million dollars, yes. I was on the board of Pelican Media, which is a nonprofit environmental and social film company, nonprofit in San Francisco. And Judy Irving made The Parrots of Telegraph Hill, and we netted $1.5 million on that film. And we believe that this film will bring many people to the City of Morro Bay in the same way that Sideways did for the San Inez Valley. Botso is a national treasure. If we had national treasures in America, he would certainly be one of them. Throughout his generous life here, he has sculpted and donated to the city the Pelican Overdorns, the sculpture in the roundabout, and, and the chessboard, which is featured, by the way, in the movie. We didn't put it in now, but we did have it. So I am here to tell you that we have been accepted, as Hillary said, to, to both Hawaii International Film Festival and Maine, and we hope at Maine to find a distributor, but we need funds for marketing posters, contract lawyers, everybody knows you need lawyers, and the music rights, to name a few of the expenses that we currently need to meet. So I'm asking the city council to underwrite the rent on the Bay Theater for the showing on the 6th and 7th of July at noon. And the, all the proceeds from that showing, those showings of the film, will go to the youth symphony and this project. Let's see if I have anything else. We think, oh, I'm asking only for $800.
Thank you very much.
And I hope that you will see fit to support this effort. Does anybody have any questions?
No, thank you. This is just public comment. Thanks for your presentation. Thank you.
I was gone. My name is Gary Hickson. I live at 761 Bute Avenue, apartment 5, over by the Morro Bay Coffee Company. Promoting a show right now, I'll put my sunglasses on. It's called Lisa Planet and the Planet Tears for Public Access. Trying to get interest in the Gary Tyler Moore Show and certain shows that I'm doing. This thing's working okay. And I think the aquarium thing is cool. It's basically like Captain Planet and the Planet Tears, but it's gonna be live action, and it's supposed to have Drew Barrymore as one of the characters, Keanu Reeves, and I play Lisa Planet. But anyway, if you've ever seen Captain Planet and the Planet Tears, it's a, a lot about ecology. I'm doing a lot with, I think, called Mirror Vision Incorporated. I'm still trying to get down to Los Angeles, and I think everybody's doing a great job. Great American Fish Company's doing good, and I'll speak as long as I can. I think the turnout here is really good. I'm glad everybody showed up to this meeting, and some of the parks and rec are kind of barren, but I go to those. barren, but I go to those too, learning about public government. And I'm wearing a lot of green right now, but I'm doing a lot of different type of TV show ideas. I'm not back on Channel 2 yet, but we're trying to get the station back. We did lose Slow Copa. There's no more Slow Copa, so we don't have our studio at Charter anymore, so we're doing it individually. Those shows like Picture the Past Production, and Leslie Carroll's a bit sick. She's not doing Flying Colors, and we lost Digital West in La Sosa, so there's Red Canary Productions to do, basically to do some of the local filming. But you see me around, I'm always in different outfits. I also play Randy Rhodes for Ozzy Osbourne, and I don't want to speak too long, but there's a lot of people that want to talk tonight. And I just want to say, go green and support the aquarium, and it's nice seeing everybody again. It's Gary Hickson, and you guys have a great summer. I'll see you on the 4th of July.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Susan Heineman, resident of Morro Bay. Mayor Irons, city council staff, residents of Morro Bay. June 21st was the summer solstice, the official beginning of summer. So what better way to celebrate than to attend the 10th Annual Estero Community Sunday Garden Barbecue? We are serving organic chicken, fresh garden salads, Noah's fabulous Pinto Beans secret recipe, garlic bread, your choice of desserts, and homemade lemonade by yours truly. Once more, we are featuring the awesome music of Jim Conroy and the Mystery Brothers. Multiple tables will be placed down the middle of the garden, spread with tablecloths and garden flowers. For children, we have the Kids' Corner, and rumor has it that they'll be making fresh berry ice cream. So here are the facts. Date, June 30th, next Sunday. Time, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Place, Estero Community Garden on Ironwood, next to Delmar Park. The tickets are $12 for chicken dinner, $10 for vegetarian, and $6 for children under 12. Tickets can be purchased at the Coalesce Bookstore in Morro Bay or at the barbecue at the time of the event. And just for tonight, Noah Smuckler has some tickets he would love to sell you. Also, for those in a hurry, the to-go dinners will be available. We hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Public comment is still open.
Hi, I'm Julie Thomas. I'm Morro Bay resident, and I'm here tonight. I just wanted to briefly mention a new Fishline mobile app that's available for smartphones and tablets that was developed to support the local commercial fishing industries and to support sustainable fisheries. And a couple of the city councilmen members are already familiar with this. Noah and Jamie have been kind enough to consent to be on the advisory committee for Fishline. Fishline was developed partially with the support of a grant from the Central California Cable Fisheries Liaison Committee. I always have trouble getting that out in one breath. But the purpose of the Fishline mobile app is to make it easy for fishermen, seafood markets, and restaurants to announce to the public, to anyone with a mobile phone app or a tablet, that they have fresh local seafood, and to make it really easy for anybody who has the app on their mobile phone or tablet to know when there's some fresh seafood available. And all of this is a way to, to basically just support the local fishermen. And so we just want to encourage everybody to download Fishline. It's now available for everybody with an iPhone or an Android device. It was completed and published on May 3rd, and it's available now. And you'll be hearing more about it, and that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
Mayor and council, Trina Doherty, resident of Morro Bay. Tonight, I'm wearing two hats, the first of which is as Vice President of Morro Bay Friends of the Library. I have a short letter to read from our President Red Davis, who's unable to be here this evening. Dear Mayor Irons and council, thank you for including a contribution to the Morro Bay Library remodel project in the city's proposed budget for next year. On behalf of the citizens of Morro Bay who love our free public library, we want to tell you that all of us appreciate your support. Sincerely, Robert Fuller Davis, Morro Bay Friends of the Library, President, Morro Bay, California. On behalf of the Morro Bay Friends of the Library Board, I would like to report that the library remodel campaign is really coming along, and invite everyone to keep an eye on our thermometer outside the library for the amazing progress we're making. A huge thank you to all of you who have donated so far. For those wanting to know more, we encourage you to go to our website at www.mbfol.org for donation information, naming opportunities, as well as upcoming book sales and other updates. We also invite everyone to stop in at the library and check out the renderings of the remodel in the lobby. This is an exciting time for Morro Bay Library, and we are looking forward to all of you taking part in this true community project. Hat number two that I'm wearing is that of Morro Bay Eco Rotary. We had an incredible turnout for our very first Greenlight Eco Fair held on June 2nd. We're still in the process of the final accounting, but we believe we have made our goal of 105 solar reading lights for the orphanage in Ghana, and 50 to our own San Luis Obispo homeless shelter, and hopefully some extra to distribute as well. A shout-out goes out to all of our wonderful sponsors and participants that made this happen, along with all of the enthusiastic attendees, including several of our council members, not all at the same time, Rob. It was a fun and educational and focused event, and it has even been reported that kids have been heard singing the songs that were taught to them by Mr. Eco, and that's kind of what it's all about, having the kids learn. A big thanks to all of their special efforts go to Father Ed and the youth group at St. Tim's, Gorilla Gardening Club, Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce, Hay Printing, and AGP Video. We had great raffle prizes, too, provided by Babylonian Soap Company, Bamboo Batu, Coast Electronics, Dutchman, Fortune Gifts, Frameworks, Growing Grounds, Smart Studio, Stand-Up Paddle Boards, Sunshine Health Foods, and Turn to Nature. So a lot of people participated in this, and a huge thanks to all who made this such a successful event. We look forward to next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Trina.
Good evening, Mayor Irons and council members. I'm Judy Heinselman, and I'm a 25-year resident of Morro Bay. And actually, I'm here this evening because I'm the very proud president of the Morro Bay Senior Citizens Incorporated. And tonight, I want our community to know that we were nominated for and chosen San Luis Obispo County Senior Program of the Year for 2012. The Area Agency on Aging and AARP sponsored this. Mayor Irons knows about this, because he was at the presentation also. We received some very nice information, of course, and a plaque. We also received recognition certificates from Congresswoman Capps and from Assemblyman Kachko. We were nominated for this by our Recreation and Parks liaison, Heather Sawyer Frith. Heather also is one of our greatest supporters, strongest advocates, and she's also an absolutely wonderful friend. So thanks to her and her boss, who just happens to be Mr. Joe Woods. Our organization is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and right now, we have just under 400 members here in Morro Bay. But we also have Cayucos, La Sosa's, and some towns further away. We earn, with that nonprofit status, we earn all of the money to pay our expenses, and we contribute quite a few dollars to many local and worthy causes and groups. We have partnered with Teen Center, and we love those kids. And this year, we financially adopted the Mermaids and Pirates Parade to help with their expenses, and we'll probably continue doing that. Those kids are going to grow up to be seniors, and I plan on getting them to memberships at that time, so I'm kind of getting going with them now. We're also heavily involved with the Morro Bay Senior Limo Project. We're working cooperatively with the Meals on Wheels Group and with the city. And we've also worked with Councilman Smuckler and Councilman Johnson. So that's going to be a very exciting project that will be forthcoming and wonderful for our community. Now, what I want to ask you is that, does everybody here know that you can come to our office, which is in the Recreation with Community Center building, and you can pay your PG&E, Southern California gas, and, I have to talk real fast, garbage bills? You save postage, we are in a little bit, I know it, and it gets going. So, thank you so much.
Judy, thank you for coming.
You can tell I love this.
Yeah.
And thank you all for what you do.
Congratulations on your award.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
I'll go real fast, because I know nothing's going on. Greetings. Ms. Nancy Johnson, I love your dalia. That's really pretty. My name is Dawn Beatty, and I live in Morro Bay. About six weeks ago, I asked the council to direct staff to provide Cloisters homeowners with pertinent history and direction on who to contact and how to proceed to rebuild the overlook that's on property that was dated to the state as one of the many concessions to get the closure development approved, and as of today, I haven't seen it. I was wondering if you would or could provide an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Public comment is still open. For those of you who wish to speak, public comment, items not on the agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, Morro Bay. My name is Melissa Peters. I'm here actually representing the Tobacco Control Program of San Luis County at 2180 Johnson Avenue in San Luis. Today, we'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate a local business, Casa de Flores Apartments, for their commitment to providing smoke-free living for their tenants. Smoke-free policies are healthier, cost-effective, and legal for property owners and managers to adopt, and the Tobacco Control Program, along with the County Health Agency, has presented Casa de Flores with a certificate that looks much like this. Not the exact one, but they have already received their certificate. Any property owner or manager who's interested in more information about tobacco-free properties is encouraged to call our program at 805-781-5564. And anybody in the audience that has questions regarding tobacco-free policies can also call that number, and we'd be happy to help them. The Tobacco Control Program would also like to thank the city of Morro Bay for providing their citizens with more smoke-free areas with their recent adoption of their outdoor smoking ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public comment is still open. For those of you who'd like to speak for items not on the agenda, seeing no more for public comment, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. We have a couple others, but does anybody have any questions? Hold to my right. None? Noah, none? My left, any questions?
I think we do have an update following up with Ms. Beatty's question about the outlook property update. I believe Mr. Woods may have something.
Good evening, and good evening, council, and thank you. This evening, a little later this afternoon, staff did put in memo to council as directed with an update on the lookout at the southern end of the Cloisters District. Basically, to summarize that memo, it's that part of the boardwalk lookout in kiosk is in Lot 123, which was a gift, I don't know if it was a gift, it was given to the state. It was offered to the state, they received it. The state Parks and Recreation Department has jurisdiction over that particular amenity, that improvement to that coastal access. And it was determined, I think it was a couple of years ago, when the deterioration was so bad that it was removed for liability reasons, and the state decided not to put that improvement back in. I don't have a name and a contact off the top of my head this evening, but it would be the local chapter, their offices in La Sosa's for State Parks, and I could certainly get a name and a specific number for a staff member that could handle any kind of concerns or suggestions that we might have. So, I have enough for you. The memo was in your box, and it is completely jurisdiction of the state parks. So we have cooperated with them and helped them remove the particular improvements, but they've chosen not to put those back in at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we can get that information to Ms. Beatty then, too, do you think?
Certainly. Tomorrow morning, we can certainly pass on that contact information directly to Dawn.
I would suggest, you can give that right now, Nick Franco would be the person you could contact with the State Parks Office, which you could find on their website, and he's the coastal supervisor who would put you in touch with the right person for that. So.
Okay, thanks for the.
And I'll give the name and number to Dawn at the break.
Okay, super. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, that looks good, then. We'll be moving on to consent items, and prior to the consent agenda, we will open it up to public comment on items on consent for those of you who wish to speak to items on the consent agenda. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council, and we have a consent agenda. Is there anything on there that we would like to pull?
A5, please.
A5? Noah? A7?
Sorry, George. I apologize, councilmember Lee.
George, anything? No? Christine?
As of a quick edit to the minutes on, so I need to pull A2.
On which one?
A2.
A2.
Thank you.
There's.
I'm sorry, excuse me. The city clerk is giving me better direction. A3.
A3?
A3, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Boucher.
So not A2. I have, so we have A5, and I have A8. And prior to making motion, I just will make a comment that it's nice to see the minutes on here for our closed session, so that's a nice addition. So with that, we've got items A5, A7, A3, and A8 to pull. Do I hear a motion to approve items A2, A1, A4? We've got A5, A6. Do I have a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Noah, second by Nancy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries, 5-0. Let's start with A3.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much. It's just a quick edit to page four. I've spoken to the city clerk, and in that set of minutes, I actually pulled item A4, and then under A4, it said that Councilmember Smuckler pulled A4, so we're just correcting if Councilmember Smuckler and the rest concur, that it would be under the notes for item A4, it would read Councilmember Christine Johnson versus Councilmember Noah Smuckler, if we're all in agreement.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, then I would move to approve A3.
I just have one more discussion on that before we do that? Is that okay?
Certainly.
On page nine also, and this can be, I would just request on this one to maybe review the minutes, the tape on this. We have a motion by me, and there's only one sentence for discussion, but there was quite a bit more in that discussion to the effect of, my motion is speaking to ordinance number two, and I just wanted to cover a little bit more information on how we got there, because, you know, I know we kind of condense our minutes, but there's really nothing that kind of steers us in that direction. I think I had some minutes that identified, you know, how we got to the different amendments. I also mentioned something about the housing, the neighborhood compatibility study in the housing element, and I- And I think there was a couple other remarks by Councilmember Smuckler as well. So I just, before we approve that, I guess I would just ask that we maybe review those minutes and review that one section, and then bring us back the next meeting for me, just so we can cover those in the minutes, if we get agreement on that. Okay. All right, so item A3, we would bring back to next meeting. And then we can move on to item A5.
That's mine. Okay. Since our last meeting, I've given a lot of serious thought to my vote regarding the expenditure of our city funds from the general fund to this whole variety of groups. So after several conversations with my constituents and a lot of personal reflection, I need to change my vote to no, and consequently, will be voting against A5, the acceptance of the budget.
Any other comments on this? I've got one more. I would just make a, I just have a brief comment on this, and that's something we should be reconsidering, and that's the aid-to-agency concept that we should consider agendizing for our future budget. So at this time, for the record, Ms. Johnson, you want to have the record state that you're voting no on A5?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. With that, any other discussion on A5? Do I have a motion to approve A5?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Smuckler is motion, second by Ms. Johnson, that would be Christine. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carries 4-1, Nancy Johnson dissenting. And we'll move on to item A7.
Yes, thank you. I pulled item A7, which is our MOU with the Astero Community Pool Project. And I pulled this mostly for information, because we are moving forward, still working with the Astero Bay Community Pool Foundation and the San Luis Coastal Unified School District in trying to establish a pool here in Morro Bay. And that's very exciting, and glad to see some members of the Pool Foundation Board and the attendants and the work that they're doing to try to raise funds and move this forward. So that's a good thing. I am a little concerned, though, because if you read our minutes here regarding the last time this was brought forward, we really, I made a point to make sure that we were going to reach out to the county and make sure that they were a party to the maximum extent possible. Understanding that this can be a fairly expensive operation, and I think that's further reason for us to try to bring them in. I think that's work that we, as the city, should partake in. I know Mr. Woods has contacted the county's staff, which I think is helpful. I'd like to, for the record, note that we need to continue to try to bring the county into the program and the efforts. And I would also just say that I think for the county staff to move forward in support, we need to make sure that people are reaching out to our representatives at the county, specifically Mr. Gibson, the supervisor, to make sure that they realize that they need to participate in this, because a pool in Morro Bay will benefit the entire Second District, if not the whole county. So with that, unless there are any other comments, I'll move approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Motion carries. We're on to item A8. Any others on A8? Okay, I have one comment on A8, and that would be for Mr. Schultz. And just as far as the contract goes, is there consideration for repair clause as far as the Lemos tent and any kind of comments on that? The contract for the Lemos tent rental for the city property, didn't notice any kind of repair clause in there. Do you think that something like that would be necessary to have a repair clause in there?
He has to, he has to return the land in the exact same condition. The tent and everything will be all of his private contract with a private company and will be his own responsibility.
So stakes like that, and all that will be repaired?
Right, exactly.
Okay. All right, thanks for that. Seeing none, I would make a motion that we approve item A8. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Motion carries. That completes our consent calendar. Moving on to item B1, and that is resolution number 3313, directing the levy of the annual assessment for the North Point Natural Area Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. And that would be Mr. Woods.
Good evening, Mayor and council. At the May 14, 2013 meeting of City Council, you adopted resolution 2613, which was approving the engineer's report and describing the annual maintenance to be completed at the North Point Natural Area and declaring the city's intent to levy the annual assessment to finance that maintenance. And tonight's meeting is a protest public hearing to propose the levy of the assessment. Staff did notice all property owners on record via first-class mail of this hearing, as well as publishing this in local newspapers. To date, staff has received no protest letters on this item. Staff does recommend you adopt resolution 33-13, confirming the levy of the assessment for the fiscal year 2013-14.
Thanks for that report. At this time, we can, any questions for Mr. Woods? Seeing no questions, I would open it up for a public comment for item B1, for those of you who want to speak, anybody wants to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Any discussion for anybody on council? To my left, to my right? Ms. Johnson?
Move approval of B1?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Johnson and Johnson, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Motion carries. Onto item B2. And this is resolution number 3413, directing the levy of annual assessment for the Cloisters Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District, and that would be you, Mr. Woods, as well.
Thank you, Donald Mayor and City Council. Again, on May 14, 2013, council met and adopted resolution 2713, which was approving the engineer's report describing the annual maintenance to be completed at the Cloisters Park in open space and declaring the city's intent to levy the assessment of the annual assessment to finance that maintenance. Tonight's meeting is a hearing to propose the levy of that assessment. Staff has, again, noticed all property owners of record via first-class mail of this hearing, and we also published it in local newspapers. Staff has, to date, received nine letters of protest regarding this item, which we have included for your review. Staff further recommends your adoption of resolution 34-13, confirming the levy of the assessment for the fiscal year 2013-14.
Thank you for that. And with that, do we have any questions for Mr. Woods or staff? To the right, Noah?
Yes, I do have a very quick one. Mr. Woods, if you don't mind briefly reviewing what your plans are for the deferred maintenance in the short term, and then what you're projecting to do with the larger deferred maintenance items for the longer term, as far as planning goes.
Currently, we're still in our fiscal year, so we're being a bit conservative with our budget. When we do conclude within the next, within the end of this month, we'll be looking to do some maintenance regarding the interpretive panel at the kiosk around the wetlands, as well as some repairs on the pathways. We just finished some major repairs to get the playground back in operational. We have a little bit more work to do there. So as our short-term goals to do, as far as our deferred maintenance. Our long-term, obviously, the playground needs to be replaced completely, and we've bought ourselves some time. And we also have some tree work to be done. We've got a lot of diseased trees in the parkways, so we're looking to remove and replace those. So, I mean, the other projects will come up, but some of that is, some of deferred maintenance is covered in our maintenance contract, which we do plan to outsource again this next fiscal year.
And you plan on continuing to have the neighborhood meetings?
Without a doubt. Staff feels that the neighborhood quarterly meetings have been very successful. The residents coming out and having their input, we think is vital. We think that, we're hoping to get more participation in the coming community neighborhood meetings. So we're advertising them through Notify Me, and we will continue to outreach to the district to the best we can.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Woods as well on the deferred maintenance. So in the report, it talks about the, any deferred maintenance funds, and so if there is a deferred fund excess, it would go into a deferred fund. So how is that managed? Do we have a specific fund for that assessment? And maybe that might be a Ms. Slaton question, but...
I got it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we do have a specific fund, an account, that all the monies go into and the expenses come out of. There's no way that these funds are commingled with any other funds. I know that's come up in the past, and no way is that true. Full accountability and transparency within this particular account. Any excess monies, just stay in the account. They don't roll over. We don't lose them. It's a carryover account that's handled through finance.
Okay. And the other one is, as far as the deferred maintenance on a case-by-case basis, the outreach meetings that are conducted, would that be a good format to get input on, from the Cloisters residents there on some of that case-by-case input for deferred maintenance?
That is definitely a good format to present any kind of ideas, suggestions, or concerns. The residents have done that in the past. We've been, I've been a little bit slow in reacting to those, being our first year in outsourcing the maintenance. I wanted to be conservative and not overspend and keep us on track financially. So I think we're at the point where we're ready to expend some of those funds. We're finding some savings, obviously, in our maintenance labor, as well as our utility savings. We've got our water bill and our electricity bill probably a little over $10,000. So we're looking to divert that money into some deferred maintenance projects, and we'll be getting those underway at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for answering those questions. With that, I'll open it up to public comment. So anyone wishes to speak on this item? Public comment is now open.
Greetings. My name is Dawn Beatty, and I live in Morro Bay. Why are we here if you guys can't vote against this levy? Every year, you receive a number of protest letters against the levy, yet every year you vote to support it. It's like a rubber stamp. For how long am I and my neighbors supposed to solely fund a public park? I know I'm beating myself, but I'm asking the cities to get some skin in the game. Please plan to invest some general fund money into Cloisters maintenance. I think it's fair to say that no one wants to see a possible wellness dream go away. However, most of the money spent in the Assessment District is for the public park. I've stated on prior occasions, this issue comes down to fairness. Sure, it's nice to have a recreational area near our homes. Same goes to the beach and the dunes. But so many in our small town have the same benefit, and they don't pay extra for it. The value of their homes may be greater, but they don't pay an assessment in addition to the property tax they already pay. The value of our homes may be greater due to this access, and thus, we pay greater property taxes. But for us, it doesn't stop there. Perhaps I won't be able to sway you with this line of reasoning, but I think it's important to note that since this assessment was formed, 100-plus homes have been built generally at least five times the amount of property tax money than was available in 1996. In addition to fees for the use of the park, none of this money is being spent on the park. That, to me, is uncomfortable. I'm well aware of the paralitigation regarding the Cloisters special benefit and the fact that the city prevailed. But that notwithstanding, unlike what I've heard before, I really don't believe the developers intended for this assessment to go on in perpetuity. Folks can interpret words to support their position, but that's just semantics. It's hard to disagree that maintenance estimate in $1996 will be enough to cover maintenance X number of years down the road. I believe the developers, in conjunction with the city, were intending for increased property tax revenues to supplement and/or supersede the assessment for Cloisters parks and surrounding area maintenance. No time like the present to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Public comment is open for those who wish to speak on this item.
My name is John Lauffer, citizen of Morro Bay, and my home happens to be within the Special Assessment District. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. And in addition to the questions that I gave you at the May 14 meeting, I've sent another letter to each of you, and I hope that you've had the opportunity to review that, giving you the complete background as I know it. I know a couple of you have spent some time talking to me on the telephone, and I really appreciate being able to communicate with you. I'd really like to prevail on you tonight to exercise your duty to represent us as citizens in front of the city government. Please honor your oath of office, where you've sworn to uphold the law. And all the background, and he said, she said, whatever, notwithstanding, the law as it's written, both the intent and the letter, is very clear. The city has the right to establish a Special Assessment District, but they have the responsibility to ensure that those taxes that are collected are for a special benefit, not available to the general public. I said that last time I prevailed on you to get robbed to give you the law to read, and I guarantee you, that's the way the law is written. And not available to the general public is the key word, because I think there's no way to argue that a public park and trail system is not available to the general public. So I guess that's all I can say, and I would ask you to do the right thing and vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lauffer. Public comment is still open for those of you who wish to speak on this item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. And I'll start to my left for questions, comments? George? None? Christine?
I do have a few things to mention. I don't have any questions at this point. Do we want to move into discussion?
If you have some questions, you want to defer to staff right now?
They're not really questions, they're more of discussion for the council?
Yep, that'd be great.
Start now?
Sure.
Okay, great. So I do appreciate that Mr. Lauffer has reminded us about the law. And yes, for history, and for someone like me who hasn't been on the council during any kind of, let's say, litigation that happened between the city and the Special Assessment District and the Cloisters with the residents, I did follow up, as Mr. Lauffer had requested, to review the law and some of the findings that came out of the litigations. And at this point, it appears that the city did prevail, as I know that the Cloisters residents are well aware of. So I can understand, however, that at this point, if they are currently under the Assessment District, I can certainly understand that if it was my home in a Special Assessment District, that I would want to make sure that the city is having proper oversight of those funds. So I would assume that most residents, if they were paying something extra, no matter how it came about or how it will continue, that they would want to make sure that oversight was happening. So what I'd like to talk about a little bit here is asking our staff to continue the meetings and to also include, at the end of the fiscal year, either sometime in July or August, when it's appropriate, to include Ms. Slaton, our Finance Director, in any year-end discussion, especially now that we've had our one year of outsourcing. We could use the model of our Measure Q process, where the Measure Q Committee comes in and reviews after the Measure Q funds were spent to ensure accountability. It wouldn't be formalized, or they wouldn't, at this point, I'm not suggesting that we make an advisory council in any way, but since we do have quarterly meetings ongoing with the Cloisters residents, I would like to suggest we build a finance meeting in, where we sit down with Mr. Woods, Ms. Slaton, and then representatives from the Cloisters group to take a look at those funds. group to take a look at those funds after they have been spent, to ensure some accountability. And the last point I will make is, I will bring this up at future agenda items, but I do think it might be possible, and I spoke to staff about this too, and also to the residents, a few of the residents, that it might be wise to have a council member serve as a liaison on a yearly basis to the Cloisters and to the North Point, since they are Assessment Districts that don't really exist anywhere else in our city, aside from our Tourism Bureau Assessment District, which is formalized with a city-sponsored advisory board. So I'll bring that up at future agenda items. That's all for this moment.
Thank you for those comments. To my left, Nancy.
Well, while I can understand and appreciate the concerns of the residents, the developers who built this area were granted several exceptions to build in this very sensitive area. I mean, it was a prime location. And the assessment was part of that agreement, and the people who bought property in this area agreed to pay the assessment, which is why we have continually voted to continue it. I think we've asked quite a bit of our staff, and they've made some real major steps in improving the situation with their quarterly meetings and talking a lot to the people who live out there. And based on all this, I think we once again need to vote to continue the assessment.
Noah?
Thank you. I would agree. Well said, Ms. Johnson. I know this is something that comes up every year since I've been on the council, and I have definitely observed and I'd like to think been a part of helping to improve the process, make sure that our staff is working to uphold our side of the bargain and our responsibilities with the maintenance and also transparent management of the budget. And we're seeing significant improvements every year, particularly the last two years, in the communication side. So I think, Christine, your suggestion of including Ms. Slaton and having a financial meeting of those four quarterly meetings is a good one to continue to try to build trust and make sure that we're doing everything we can to uphold our side of the bargain. So I'd agree.
Okay, thank you for that. Thanks for your comments. And one other item that came up for me on this, in addition to your comments, the deferred maintenance. And if we're, I think it's great to consider a finance report in those quarterly meetings and perhaps in the engineers' report that is due every year, that we incorporate deferred maintenance schedule as well. So when we're looking at this five years out, are we really going to be addressing the Cloisters adequately? Or are we going to be looking at general funds to take on capital improvement projects or deferred maintenance projects that we're not preparing for? So I would, you know, I would support your comments and also try to include some sort of deferred maintenance schedule in our engineers' report as well, so we can address that for the future and perhaps look at how we strategize with that assessment budget.
Move approval of B2.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion by the Johnsons and a second. And any discussion?
Yes, just in the discussion, I think it's very important in the minutes that your two points are included in the minutes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, my motion was kind of based on assuming that would happen.
Thank you. All right, so we're all good there? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene and get going on our next item, and we'll see you then. Hello, everyone. We're back. Thanks for your patience and being with us. We're going to get on to item D1, and that is consideration of the future lease site 69-70, 69W, and 70W, the Mor Bay Aquarium. Mr. Andersby has the staff report, and I've got all the speaker slips. There are time slots on this. I'm going to start off with the one-minute people first, but there are so many in here to get everybody through here tonight, we're going to go to two minutes. So the people that have signed up for one minute, we'll sign, I'll read your name and I'll give, read out your name, and then I'll go to the, read two more, so you know who's next. And then we'll go through that, and then once we get going, I'll give about three people spaced out, so you know what's coming up. And then, so there again, we'll go to two minutes on that, so everybody can speak. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to get everybody through tonight. So with that, I turn it over to Mr. Andersby for your staff report.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. What we have for you tonight is consideration of the future of lease site 69-70, 69W, 70W, which is the Mor Bay Aquarium, currently operated by Dean and Bertha Tyler. This is a 50-year Pipkin lease, first entered into in 1968, therefore it's up in 2018. The lease is entering its last five years of its term, and per the lease management policy of the City of Mor Bay, we're getting council and public input into the future of this site, as it is public property. The public weighs in on what the future of this site may hold. Per previous council direction last fall, our old city council, quote-unquote, when we considered this in closed session, that city council directed staff to put this out for request for proposals, RFPs. A couple of reasons that has not been done. One, because we're short-staffed and we're limited on what we can do, and we just haven't gotten to it yet. But also, but I think more importantly, the new city council, in hearing this issue and a further public comment and hearing several other lease issues in closed session, decided largely on comments from the public, that we wanted to bring these to open session and get the first round of comments and first round of council direction done in open session with public input. So we changed our way of doing business a little bit on these leases, and that's why we're, in a way, kind of starting over with this lease site. So I just want to get that out there and, you know. Could we have put out an RFP earlier or later last year? Sure. But it didn't get done, and we're redoing it, and we're really keeping in compliance with what this council wants to do and how we move forward with these leases. This leasing, the Tylers have submitted a couple of proposals for their desires on this lease site. It's in your packet. Basic details are some cosmetic work to the building, some electrical and other upgrades. They also propose to raise their fees modestly and start putting together a kitty, if you will, or a fund to go towards a future possible reconstruction of the site over a 10-year period. They're requesting a 10-year lease in addition to what they have now, which they do have five years left. Staff has met several times with the leasing's and their representatives to try and flesh out the details of their proposal, and as you know, they've come to closed session a couple of times in the past as well. These tenants are tenants in good standing. They've abided by the terms of their lease for 45 years. We've got two alternatives for consideration here. Accept the proposal from the leasing's as detailed out and work with them towards the future 10 years that they're proposing in this site, or go out for request for proposals and put it out to the public to see if there's any other ideas on how to run this lease site. We received a lot of correspondence over this last week, a lot of email correspondence, fair number of phone calls, fair number of letters. If I had to categorize it, there's, email-wise, you know, most of the emails are pretty much against the aquarium operating as-is, but I'd put the caveat on there that most of those comments are coming from out of the area, a lot of them overseas. What we're seeing in personal letters and emails from folks within the county is largely in opposition to the aquarium as-is, but they have a fair base of support. And I think what we see in meetings typically is the folks in support come out and speak. Then in our Harvard Advisory Board meeting earlier in the year, the comments were three to one in support of the leasing in the aquarium. So like I say, we've received 100, and I think we've, you guys have received a lot of emails in the past as well. Staff is asking for direction on which of the two alternatives to take. We're basically looking for, you know, alternative A or alternative B. At this point, we're not asking for detailed information or discussion on, you know, if you choose alternative A or alternative B, what your detailed hopes, dreams, and desires for each of those alternatives should be. That'll be further down the line. I'm happy to answer any questions. Any other comments? I'm happy to take them.
Thanks for that report. Questions for council, for Mr. Andersby? George? Christine?
Thank you for your report. Mr. Andersby, one question that comes to mind is, if the council decision is to go out for RFP, that also allows the current leaseholders to apply, correct? It has nothing to do with whether they could or could not send a proposal or forward the, flesh out a proposal already sent in?
Correct, absolutely. They would be invited, and I would hope that they would submit something.
And then I have one other question, too. And I know that I've talked to staff about this on two different occasions in the last week, is that the city council and the city did receive a letter from the San Luis Obispo County Health Agency Animal Services Division from Eric Anderson, DVM Account, Animal Services Manager, and this letter did not make it into the staff report. I think it has value, and I also would say that I did also find the time to send it to the current leaseholders via email, and I informed the staff, city staff, I was going to do so. And the reason I find that it's important to bring it up right now at this point is to get a response as to why it was not included. This county, the Animal Service Division is under the San Luis Obispo County Health Agency, and the City of Mor Bay, on the budget that we approved, approved nearly $5,000,000 for contract services that we asked this agency to do for us in terms of animal welfare. So I'd just like to ask that question to staff, and they knew it was coming, so it's not a big surprise as to maybe why that wasn't included in the staff report, so that the public could see that, including the applicants.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. No surprises. A collective executive decision that, you know, of all the letters that we did receive, and there were numerous, both me, that I received in our office and the city council, the decision was made, and the feeling was that if we include that letter, we really need to include every letter. And then if we're including letters, does it need to be emails? And do we need to keep a tally of phone calls? And the numbers just have gotten so overwhelming that it's, we made, decided to make them available in the city clerk's office. It's kind of a one-stop shopping. Everything would be held there if people want to go see it.
So if I may, just one follow-up question to that, then the reason that I encouraged this letter and not others was because it, would it have been the only letter we received like this from an agency, rather than from, let's say, you know, an individual with, you know, an opinion one side, on one side or the other, but this would be the only agency that has directly contacted the city? Is that correct?
Correct. It is only the only public agency that we received. We received one letter and an email from PETA, which is a non-governmental organization, NGO, and one from the Humane Society as well, which would also be an NGO.
Okay, thank you for making that clarification. I appreciate you talking about it. Thanks.
You're welcome.
At this point, that is the only question.
Thanks for that. Nancy?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Andersby, but first, I would once again ask why only certain members of council are getting these emails. I did not receive any such email from the county. And I think if organizations like this, and it's happened before, are going to email us, they should email all of us.
I have a response to that. This was a letter, just in, if I may clarify then?
Yeah, we're getting a little off-track here. Sticking to the topic of that.
Just a comment I wanted to, and I want to move on.
Yeah, comment noted. Thank you.
The letter was sent.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Andersby, you give us two alternatives here. Is there possibly a third alternative, which would just to be to send the leaseholders back to give us a better or improved proposal?
That's certainly within your purview.
Thank you.
Noah?
Yeah, thank you. I just did want to say for the record, I'm pretty confident we did receive this letter as part of a correspondence, but we could just double-check with staff the public services letter. I remember opening and reading it.
It was sent to the county, it was sent to the city clerk, and then it was forwarded to all council members and some staff. It was sent to Ms. Boucher.
On your defense, Nancy, we have been kind of flooded by emails, and it's been hard to sift through them all because of our antiquated email system. But that's another topic. My only question to you, Mr. Andersby, would be if you could review the content of the proposal that the Tylers have put forward. Obviously, we've had a chance to review it. I'm not sure everyone in the audience has, and you've mentioned 10 years, but if you could talk just a little bit about some of the details, that would, I think, be important.
Thanks, Noah.
Sure, and I'll add that possibly the leasing's may detail that out as well. Essentially, you know, we received two proposals as time has gone on here, and they've come to understand, you know, what the city's been asking of them to get to the council. The first proposal was largely dock and piling repairs, some upgrades to the building, including, you know, exterior cosmetic, as well as some interior, electrical, and other modest remodeling on the interior to make it more functional as a retail and as a business, but keeping the existing structure essentially as-is. Again, the second proposal, more recently proposed, was to add, increase their admission fees, and any additional fees that they'd get out of that would go towards a dedicated fund, that as they operate this lease and their proposal for another 10 years, those funds would build and be sort of a nest egg for the, be turned over to the city to use in whatever way it saw fit and towards redeveloping that site.
Okay. I think I'm good on my questions right now. I would turn it over to, at this point, before we go to public comment, we'll have Mr. Tyler come up as the applicant, and he can speak to that. And then, once we go to public comment, like I say, I'll go through my list, and then I just ask, you know, for everyone to, you know, I'll give you a heads-up on who's coming up, and refrain from any applause or any kind of outbursts, and we'll get through this together. Mr. Tyler?
Yeah, good evening, mayor and the staff here.
Can you help him with the mic? There we go.
Too high.
A little bit lower?
Can everybody hear me now?
A little bit lower?
Yeah. Okay, well, the first thing I want to do is clear the air with some people
Thanks.
that have been misinformed.
So, Mr. Tyler, I'll introduce you. For the record, Mr. Tyler, Dean Tyler is up speaking for us. I just wanted to make that for the record for you.
Well, I don't understand you very well, but if everything's okay, I'll go ahead.
You proceed. Thank you.
Okay. You folks all know Lori down at the Harvard Department, and of course, I was down there about a month and a half ago, and I just thought I'd carry on a little conversation with her, and she told me that the aquarium is old, it's bad, and it needs to be tore down. Well, she didn't realize that after the San Simeon earthquake, I was required to have the building tested, and they were going to use electronic equipment on it, and I told the guy, "Well, what's it going to do with the seals and everything?" He said he wouldn't even be in the building. It was so strong. I says, "Well, you're not going to use electrical equipment because I got regard for the seals and the fish." So I found a magnetic device that would come in and test for all the rebar and everything. So I wanted her to know that the building is safe, it's not ready to fall down, and it's not wore out, even if it is 50 years old. Okay. Christine Johnson come down, and she come upstairs, but she wouldn't go down where the seals were, she wouldn't go down where the fish were, because evidently, she has a strong feeling against the aquarium and maybe me, as far as that goes. So then another one that I mentioned, the three, Eric had this closed-session meeting with the people from Avla, and I should have been involved in that, but I wasn't. So that's three things there that I just wanted to get aired out before I started anything else. Now then, as he got the, the next one would be on the remodel. I remodeled three times, and the first one that show, no, that's another one. Okay, I'll go on that one. The Department of Agriculture in Washington, DC, they make the rules and regulations for tanks, depths, and resting area. Well, they come up with the idea that you're supposed to have 44 square feet for each animal in captivity. And so I had to put up these animal in captivity, and so I had to put up these up and shelves up here, and I don't show the part there on the end where, where they can crawl up, but I crawled up in there, and so then, as soon as I got out of the way, the seals started coming up in there, and sometimes four of them will be up there all at once, they like to get in the sun. So with, with the extra square foot that I put up there, I've got 132 square feet more than I needed for the animals that's in the aquarium. So that's sort of a safety factor, I'll call it. Okay, then, when I did the tanks, the next one though there, no, that's Gary coming down. Well, I need the next one that shows the, when we dug the tanks out, it's a big one like that one, I didn't have it in the right rotation, I guess. No, that's not it either. I'm sorry about this, I had them, had them in the right rotation, then I got them mixed up. Well, so anyway, that was another thing that they wanted, was they wanted the tank a little deeper, and so I, the first time I remodeled, I shut the aquarium down, and that was a big mistake. Oh yeah, there's a cement finisher working in the tank. I shut the aquarium down while we worked, and I found out that was a big mistake. It's just like you go down the highway, and they're working on it, and they say, "Right lane's closed," but you keep the highway open. So the next two times I remodeled, I put, now you can flip to the next one, I let the people keep coming through, and I never closed down, and yeah, well, there you can see where I had to put the new wall in, and put the tank down. Now, these are all improvements that I've made in the last few years, that the folks that are here and come through, unless you leave it open for them, they don't know, and they liked that when I, when I did it that way, because they could see that we was doing things to improve the appearance, and also make the aquarium look better. Now, some of the folks back here are talking about the seals don't have enough room, they don't have this, they don't have that. Well, they're misinformed, because they really don't know. Now, I've been, in the last few years, I've been to over 31 different aquariums, up and down the coast, and back east, and all over, and you can go up and verify it, because all these things I'm telling you are the truth, I've actually seen them. I go to the Westport Aquarium in Washington, and their tanks are smaller than mine, and they don't even have as much water, it's not as deep, but Washington has different rules, even if the USDA from Washington, DC is looking over them. So that takes care of Westport. Then you can go down to Seaside, and their condition there, and their building is old, it used to be a swimming pool, and it's not remodeled on the outside, nothing like that, and they have these tanks left over from where it was a swimming pool in 1928, I think that's when that was. So for the folks that don't know, seals don't have to have, they have to have depth, and they have to have enough water. I pump 140,000 gallons a day through there, and a double filter, there's some of the folks were down there yesterday and today, and I showed them about it. Okay. And Depot Bay is another older, older one, and, and they don't have just one pool for their seals, and it's, it's out in the open, and people can look at them there and feed the seals, and do similar things to what we do down here. And then I got to go back east one time in all this period, I got to Key West, Florida, and that, that aquarium down there was built in 1928, and they let the water from the ocean come in a little, sort of a tunnel, and then it goes around, and the seals swim in that, and they don't filter it, and they don't do anything to clear it up. It's whatever the water is in the bay, that's the way it is. And so, the things that we do down here are a lot better than what some of these, well, they're older than us, because they always started here in 1960. So I feel like that we've done a lot of good things here. Oh, and on the outside the building, this remark keeps coming up, they want to see a nice new shiny aquarium, that's what they call it. Well, the folks that come in don't really care about the outside, and that wood that I put in there was redwood plyboard, it was genuine redwood, so it hasn't changed color, it'll stay the same, and it'll still look good. And then there's a company in Phoenix, Arizona, that builds different types of marine backdrops, and they're in Phoenix, the Nelson Equipment Company, and I visited there and got some of their equipment, and that's what my proposal is, is to get them going here, and we'll do the tanks on the inside. And I told you about shutting the freeway down, so this way, if I do that work on the inside, I won't have to shut down one tank at a time, and I move specimens. I've got a real careful way of moving specimens, so you don't knock the scales off of them, because even as many years as I've been around fish, I don't even like to see a fish get hurt or die. Now, one time here, a couple of months ago, the fisherman brought me in a fish, and any of you guys know, if you go fishing, and you drag a fish out on the boat, and he flops something down, it's just, you took him out of the water. So it knocked some of the scales off of him. Well, this person come in and seen them scales knocked off that fish, so he had a fit and reported me to the county, and then the county overseer come out and looked at it and says, "Well, that fish is bad, you're killing him." And I says, "No, I'm not." So I put him in another tank, you can go down there and look at him right now, he was a big sheephead, and he overcome the problem, scales all grew back on, he's ate, and he's put on weight. So all these things that we're doing, that we've had, we'll say, unfavorable publicity about the fish and the seals and the water and all that, are gotten from people that didn't really know what they were talking about. Thank you for listening to my story.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Please keep your applause down. So, Mr. Tyler, as the applicant, was given 10 minutes to, to present, and then we'll go into public comment, and I would just ask that we, you know, refrain from applause, then we're going to get applause back and forth, so we'll start with that. Now we'll go into public comment, and we have Linda Merrill. Hold, pardon me. Pardon me, Linda, I think we had one, one response for, for Mr. Tyler. Ms. Johnson, you had a reply?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to clarify some comments that were made by Mr. Tyler during his presentation. I have indeed visited the aquarium, and the way that I scheduled my meeting to meet with the Taylors was I had stopped by one day and left my city council phone number and card there, the day I toured the aquarium, and that is then how, and I toured the aquarium on my own, and I went through the mammal exhibit and into the fish exhibit, and I spent some time in the gift shop, and I probably shouldn't tell my husband if I shopped or not, but the reality was, then, that is how I was able to get in touch with the Taylors, is that I did receive a call then from Bertha Tyler after my visit, because I left my card there, and I did come to visit, and we did go upstairs, but I'm respectful of your time, and I had to pick up my son at school by 2:30, I think we met around 1:00, so at that time, you did offer a tour of the aquarium, and I'm sorry that you don't recall, that I probably wasn't very clear, and said I had already toured the aquarium. So I just wanted to be really clear on that, and that I have never expressed my opinion one way or another about, an opinion about the aquarium prior to discussion this evening. And I, we did, I thought we had a really lovely visit, and I really enjoyed hearing some of the stories that you've told about your last 53 years, so, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else, anybody else seeing that? Thank you for that, and now we'll get into public comment, and the first one is Linda Merrill, Trudy O'Brien, and Judy Cross.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
You're down for one minute.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Linda Merrill. I'm sorry that the letter from the county animal services was not in the packet. I was able to, to get a copy of it and read it, and I thought that it had a lot of important information in it. I agree with our county animal services manager that the aquarium needs serious upgrades, and that the lease should be contingent upon it being accredited by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. This cannot be a surprise to the lease site holders, that this property needs upgrades. I, please consider the welfare of the animals in the facility when you make up, make your decisions this evening. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Linda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, and everybody here. My name's Trudy O'Brien, I've been a resident of Morro Bay for 37 years, and I'm just here to show my support of the aquarium, and I hope you make the right decision tonight, whatever that might be. Thank you.
Thank you, Trudy.
Good evening, my name is Judy Cross, I'm a citizen of Morro Bay, and I'm just standing in support of the aquarium. It's one of the few places where families with kids can go and have an affordable experience, it's educational, and for decades, if not generations, people have come and enjoyed with their families from all over the state and far beyond, and if it's ever lost, I'm sure many, many people will, will reminisce about the wonderful times they had there feeding the sea lions, and, and I just wanted to stand in support of the aquarium. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Francesca Henderson, Stephen Rubich, and Holly Sledland, I hope I don't butcher those names too badly. Francesca Henderson?
It's Francesca Henderson.
Okay, Francesca, thank you.
No problem. Good evening, Council, again, my name's Francesca Henderson, I'm a Morro Bay resident, and I'm here tonight, quite simply, to voice my opinion against the Morro Bay Aquarium. I think as a community, we can do a lot better, and I think we can come together and do a lot better with this space, and I encourage you to consider the good of the community and the good of the animals in your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Stephen Reebok, I live in San Luis Obispo. I grew up in Morro Bay, my family moved here in 1955 to fish abalone, and I've known Bertha and Dean Tyler for about 50 years now. In the 60s, environmental community told us all that we're involved with fishing, we had to learn to live with marine mammals, sea otters, sea lions, et cetera, and we did, and it was tough, because a lot of us lost our livings and such, and Bertha and Dean both lost their involvement with abalone fishing, which was a wonderful thing, fishing was a wonderful thing. But what I know about them was they were never vindictive about the animals. When they started aquarium, they took in sea otters and seals and sea lions, there was no book on how to do this, they learned by doing, they learned animal husbandry by participating. I consider personally the two of them to be local heroes, and I support the 10-year extension to their lease. And in closing, I did, I conducted an oral history in this room a couple of years ago with the Morro Bay Historical Society, and interviewed both Dean and Bertha, and it was really interesting, and one of the questions we asked was about releasing animals. Well, they said, "Well, yeah, we release them occasionally, but we'll take them way up the coast, and drop them off, and within a couple of days, they're back." I think that is counter to some of the things we've heard about abuse and mistreatment of these animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Holly Sledland and Erica Statfish.
I'm Holly Sledland, and although I live in Templeton, I work on the coast and frequently pass by the aquarium and the seals, and I can't tell you how glad I am that we have an opportunity to improve the lives of these animals by not renewing the lease for their confinement. Please take advantage of it. I urge you to seize this chance to end the suffering of the seals while entertaining proposals for a new venture that is more in keeping with the times, a venture that recognizes the enormous benefits that the city has reaped from the oceans in the past, and that encourages the public to respect and conserve the resources of the sea if they want to enjoy their bounty in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Sandra, or, excuse me, you're Erica?
Yeah.
Okay. Erica? Okay, great, thanks. And then Sandra Gilard?
May I approach and give a hard copy here of something? A copy, may I approach?
Certainly.
Okay.
Or you can give it to the city manager, and they'll pass it up to us, thanks.
Give us the email, but I'd like to...
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Jamie Irons, City Council, and members in attendance. My name is Erica Satkoski, and I'm a resident of Grover Beach, and I'm a, a public school teacher of 12 years, but I'm actually here on behalf of a consultant that I have contacted, Dr. Terry Maple. I, there's, he has a, a long biography here of his many achievements, but I'd like just to highlight a few of them. Dr. Maple is best known for his visionary leadership in revitalizing Atlanta's City Zoo after the most publicized scandal in the history of American zoos. He's a founding editor of the Journal Zoo Biology, published by John Wiley Blackwell in association with, Association of Zoos and Aquariums. He was a president of AZA from 1998 to 1999, and for a decade, he served as vice chair of AZA's Field Conservative Committee. He's written his 13th book on aquariums and zoos, Keeping Animals in Captivity, and he's currently working with the San Francisco Zoo as a professor in residence, so he's working on a wellness program. The goal for him is to always have the wellness of the animals involved. So I'd like to read just a few, he, I have contacted him, he has written a letter stating his opinion, which I agree with, I'm against the Morro Bay Aquarium as it stands at this time. What he has written is that citizens should be taught to respect wildlife and appreciate the inherent dignity of marine mammals on display, and those living in the open ocean. Respect begins with superior animal care, a commitment to environmental enrichment, and qualified veterinary services administered on a regular and consistent basis. Superior aquariums make the connection between animal welfare and conserv- conservation, and teach visitors that communities have a stake in the natural world. Your community deserves a reputable aquarium where the animals can enjoy a superior quality of life. Such a facility is not only possible but easily achievable, once national standards are widely understood and accepted. In my opinion, local government should demand substantial improvements before they agree to extend the lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandra Gilard and Jenny Jones, following her.
Hello, my name is Dr. Sandra Gilard, and I live in Grover Beach. California sea lions are known for their intelligence, playfulness, and noisy barking. Males reach 850 pounds and seven feet in length. Females grow to 220 pounds and up to six feet in length. Sea lions travel at speeds of around 6.7 miles per hour, and can dive at depths of 274 meters, and for up to 9.9 minutes. Thought most dives are typically 80 meters and last less than three minutes. They sometimes cooperate with other predators, such as dolphins and seabirds, when hunting large schools of fish. Sea lions sometimes follow dolphins and exploit their hunting efforts. Adult females feed between 6.2 and 62 miles from shore. Males may forage as far as 208 miles from shore when water temperatures rise. How can these animals to be happy in such small space? My history, I went over there to visit the aquarium some time ago, and when I came over there, I asked this lady if she thinks that the animals were happy, and she said, "Yes, they are happy." yes, they are happy. When I left the aquarium...
I'm gonna have to ask you to conclude.
I, I asked her for, for three minutes.
We're only going for two minutes to get everybody have the opportunity to speak. Um, we're going with two minutes today.
Okay. So my question is, how could we humans be so greed, and how can you determine how and where they should live? Putting them in captivity impeding, impeding their freedom?
Thank you. I'm gonna have to ask you to conclude.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. To make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak, we're gonna be limited to two minutes. Jenny, come, come in, up and speak. Thank you.
Jenny B. Jones of Morro Bay. Council members, what attracted you to Morro Bay? I was attracted by the natural beauty and a town just big enough to be entertaining, small enough to care about its residents. I also saw billboards everywhere that said, "Morro Bay, discover your better nature," and "Morro Bay is a bird sanctuary," as if to say this town values the nature surrounding it. We can either evolve into a place known for its natural beauty and progressive ways or not. Instead of an aquarium, I for one would like to see something other than the confinement of living species for fun and profit. It's easy to enslave weaker beings, sacrificing their lives for our profit. I know it's hard to let go of that income, and it's easy to say they don't mind living in cages, or that they're happier in there, or they're better taken care of. It was also said of that about African Americans as slaves. If we want to attract tourists to see wildlife, attract them to see wild life, which we are fortunate to still have. How about a theater, a nightclub, a town museum, or a proposal I see coming up later on? Until you try living in a cage for yourself, even for just, say, three or five years, you don't really know how those beings feel or what they think, and we may never know. I understand that not having an aquarium or other marine life business opportunity would likely lose the inflow lease. Again, it's hard to let that go, but we should know that the reason those leases are no longer or very difficultly issued by the Coastal Commission is because they are damaging to our oceans to do that. What kind of image would we like to portray? An eco-friendly town that honors its natural beauty, or a place that exploits nature to the point of harming it? Request for proposal.
Next, we have Lois Barber, Kimberly Dreher, and Dixie Patterson.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Irons and City Council. My name is Lois Barber, and I'm a resident of Shell Beach. My hope is that all this attention to the aquarium will make more people aware of the uniqueness of all these animals, how they have intelligence and the desire for freedom, and that they suffer when confined with little room and unnatural surroundings. It takes a great deal of knowledge and work to help wild animals thrive in captivity. Unfortunately, the Morro Bay Aquarium is antiquated. The enclosures are much too small and dismal, with nothing resembling a natural environment. For me, it was extremely depressing to visit. However, visiting it has motivated me to speak out to close the aquarium and to relocate these animals so they can live their lives in more natural, humane surroundings. I'm appalled that such a place could have existed for so long. It's a bite on the central coast. I urge the City Council to deny the lease. Thank you.
Next, we have Kimberly Dreher, followed by Dixie Patterson.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Kim Dreher, and I'm a resident of Glendale, California. My family and I visited the Morro Bay Aquarium three years ago when we were on vacation, and like many others, we were shocked and appalled by the conditions. The images of the aquarium have haunted us ever since, so when I heard the lease was up for renewal, I started a petition on change.org. In a few weeks' time, the petition was signed by over five thousand eight hundred people, and that number is continuing to grow. We're at a hundred and seventy-two pages and counting. Morro Bay is making a name for itself, not as the quaint tourist town with natural beauty, which it is, but instead as home to the worst aquarium in the nation. People from around the world, including many from Australia, Canada, Denmark Island, the UK, just to name a few, have signed the petition. There's also twenty-eight pages of comments from people both locally and abroad. Rachel, a Morro Bay resident, wrote, "I love our city, but this place is a disgrace." Anne, of Oakland, wrote, "I will not visit the city of Morro Bay until this facility is closed." Carolyn, of the UK, "I walked past this awful place two weeks ago and heard the cries of the seals. Just a few feet away in the sea were seals enjoying their freedom. It broke my heart. I couldn't wait to get out of that town." I understand that many people in Morro Bay see the Tylers as valued members of the community. However, allowing an aquarium that is drawing an ever-increasing amount of criticism to operate is not the way to honor the Tyler family. The size and composition of the aquarium might have been acceptable in the nineteen sixties, but the standards the general population now views as humane no longer come close to what the current aquarium is able to provide, even with significant modification. People are contacting me on a daily basis, wanting to know what they can do to ensure the aquarium doesn't continue to operate. I'm also getting a number of media inquiries. The pressure is only going to continue to grow. Please, I hope that you'll do the right thing for the animals and for the city. The world is now paying attention. And I have the petitions too, if I can...
Next is Dixie Patterson. Then Abe Pearlstein. Dixie Patterson. Okay, we'll go on to Abe Pearlstein.
Hello, uh, Mayor, Councilmember, staff, public. I am here to plant a proverbial seed. I agree with most of the previous statements. On the screen there, you will see what I, it's a vision, it's not really honed out very much, but I've seen it in other aquariums. It's a reimagined Morro Bay Aquarium. It's an underwater and an above-water harbor channel view. So you're actually not caging any of the animals. They're just swimming by, or they're on a post coming down from a pier piling. There's a floating dock by the window. Visitors observe the often goofy antics of wild, free-swimming lions, sea lions. Trained docents above the water, maybe even below the water, offer wild, cage-free seals, sea lions, otters, fish their normal food, and that equates to lively wildlife viewing activity for the public. Outdoor above-the-water viewing platform, a supplemental underwater lighting system with twenty-four-seven webcams, which are showcasing all the above I just mentioned, and below-water activity to the world to promote us here. And lastly, increased visitation by tourists and locals alike really equates to increased prosperity to the aquarium, local businesses, the local workforce, all of whom depend upon a thriving tourist economy. I hope we can reinvent this and give it another chance in a wild, cage-free environment. Thank you.
Chuck Dishman. Lawrence Valens.
My name's Chuck Dishman from Glendale, California. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. In the fall of two thousand twelve, you, the ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, ordered an RFP for the lease site under, under discussion. In a staff report produced less than a week ago by the Harbor Director, Mr. Endersby, he concedes that no RFP has ever been issued, due to time constraints, due to staffing constraints, and in an attempt to provide transparency. The Council has business and financial experience, and I implore you to draw upon that experience in recognition that without an RFP, you deny your constituents, the residents of Morro Bay, the financial benefits that may accrue to them via the, via the free-market process. This is clearly evident in the weak proposal of the current leaseholders. I urge the Council to issue the RFP and allow the free-market system to work for the benefit of Morro Bay residents. Thank you for your time.
Lawrence Valens? Is that Lori? Thanks.
Dear Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager, I've worked in, shopped in Morro Bay for nineteen years. The Morro Bay Aquarium claims to be a rehabilitation facility, but it is not licensed by the state of California as such. Their website says they care for animals brought in because of injuries or abandonment, but most of the animals have been obtained from other facilities or businesses. The facility is run down, inadequate, and inhumane. There are no marine mammal scientists or specialists there, not even a marine mammal veterinarian overseeing the care of the animals. Harbor seals generally live for twenty-five years, but at this facility, in barren, small tanks with nothing to do but beg for food, they last an average of less than seven years. Most visitors, any who care about animals, are appalled, as I was, at the conditions for both the sea mammals and other creatures in the dark, dismal fish tanks, and the conditions have not improved in my nineteen years here, despite numerous citations from the U.S. Department of Agriculture for failing to meet even minimal standards of care and violations of the Animal Welfare Act, twenty-two violations in a sixteen-month period. The owners have had fifty-plus years, more than enough time, to improve the facility and safeguard the lives of the animals in their care. Instead, they have proven that they will not change. Mr. Tyler spoke earlier of improving the appearance and making the aquarium look better, but cosmetic work will not help the animals. The USDA, some of the inspections have stated citations for failure to ensure the food for marine mammals is wholesome, palatable, and free from contamination. Repeated failure to have holding facilities in place to meet the needs for isolation, separation, medical treatment. Repeated failure to keep individual animals' medical records and have them available for AFIS inspection. The aquarium received twenty-two non-compliances between April two thousand nine and two thousand ten.
I'm gonna have to ask you to conclude.
The city of Morro Bay is a progressive town, and I'm really proud to work here and enjoy it, and this is a miserable existence for the animals. Please consider the facts rather than sentiment.
Please conclude.
And please do what's best for the animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Courtney Carmen, Renee Rubin, and Debbie Buckheim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilpeople. My name is Dr. Courtney Carmen. I'm a psychologist and resident of Morro Bay. I have worked in correctional settings for nearly a decade with some of the most violent offenders in the country, whose offenses often include murder, rape, and offenses against children. Even so, there are minimum standards of care for these offenders, including access to medical care, rec time, access to sunlight, a healthy diet, spatial regulations for housing, et cetera. Yet I think we'd all agree that none of us would want to be in prison, especially if mistreated. I am saddened and appalled at the housing conditions and lack of treatment and care to animals at the aquarium. If inmates can be treated with dignity, care, and respect, how can we ignore these animals and allow their mistreatment to continue? Aside from the animals, in contrast to those who argue it's so great for the city, I beg to differ. I have heard a plethora of people refer to Morro's, Morro Bay's aquarium as depressing and dingy. It's a blemish to the city, not an asset. The city can change these sentiments by putting an end to this. Thank you.
Renee Rubin? Or is that Reenie Rubin?
It's Reenie.
Oh, cool. And next is Debbie Buckheim.
Hi, my name is Reenie Rubin. I live in Cambria, California. The aquarium, in my opinion, is not a tourist attraction, but more of a tourist detraction. These animals are living in deplorable conditions, and judging from their continued barking, they are in agony. To allow this abuse to continue for one more day, let alone fifty more years, is inhumane, plain and simple. This is not a quality of life. This is not a rehabilitation endeavor. This is merely greed and self-interest at work with no consideration whatsoever to these animals. It's time to shut this aquarium down, and if you have any kind of heart and feel any sense of compassion for these animals, you will agree. Thank you.
Debbie Buckheim and Jeremiah O'Brien.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, Councilmembers. As you said earlier, Mayor Irons, the aquarium issue is not about the character of the Tylers or how well they're liked. Uh, the real issues of the aquarium are the inadequate, inhumane living conditions of the animals and its reflection on the city of Morro Bay. Their outdated bathtub-sized tanks would be an embarrassment to most towns, but especially a town like Morro Bay, which proclaims to visitors and locals of its pride in being a wildlife sanctuary. It does not provide any educational experience. It merely objectifies these animals by putting them on display with no docent biologist or written material that could provide a learning experience. It is not a rehab facility, as it claims to be. I speak from twelve years' experience as a wildlife rehabilitator. The goal of wildlife rehabilitation is to restore the animal to health and release it back into the wild. All but one of the animals here were captive born and purchased. The one who came from the wild was not properly rehabilitated. She kept returning, I believe, not because she loves the aquarium, but because she was habituated to being passively fed and eventually lost the skills required to hunt for food. Anyone who has ever visited the Embarcadero has heard the cries of the animals in the aquarium. In fact, they permeate the air. With the proximity of wildlife living free in the bay, it is a sad contrast. It's time to put this outdated roadside attraction where it belongs in the past. Now it's time to do what's right for Morro Bay's future and the aquarium animals. Thank you.
Jeremiah O'Brien, Sarah Spengman, and Mayor Dorton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, uh, City Staff. My name is Jeremiah O'Brien, representing the Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Organization. And, uh, I just want to say that this is Morro Bay. I've been here for thirty-three years now, and, uh, Morro Bay's always been Morro Bay. Little funky, little different, little quirky, uh, luckily, and that's one of the reasons so many of us have loved Morro Bay. Everyone's talking about an aquarium. We're not Monterey. We're not Carmel, or, this is Morro Bay. You know, people come over here, valley people, farmers, people in town here, fishermen. It's, we're not Monterey. If we want Julie Packard to move in and throw up a Monterey Bay Aquarium, thirty-four ninety-five for an adult, twenty-one ninety-five for a child, old guys like me only have to pay thirty-one ninety-five. And, uh, I don't think that's what we're looking for. Our aquarium has twenty-five hun- two-hundred-and-fifty thousand people some years going through it. If we're looking for tourism in Morro Bay, I'd say that's a pretty good number. I mean, how many other businesses and tourist attractions? Draw twenty-five hundred people in Morro Bay. Uh, I got a million things to say here. By the way, the barking of the sea lions out there, if anybody, I've been around sea lions all my life, my entire life, sixty, be sixty-six years this year. They bark all the time, incessantly. We can't sleep on our boats, because they're barking all night long, and they're in the wild. And as far as too small, their, their pens are too small, they're, be shut down if their pens are too small. That's total lie. Their pens are not too small. The Department of Agriculture regulates that, and they don't allow too smaller pens.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah Spengman and Mayor Dorton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Hello, my name is Sarah Spengman. I live in San Luis Obispo. I've been an educator and teacher for ten years now. I would like to discuss the claim that the aquarium is educational. It is, in fact, providing children and youth in this community with the worst kind of education possible, an education in how to treat animals inhumanely, and an education in exploitation of those who are weaker than we are. Uh, the facility's front door is covered with bumper stickers. The front door is covered with bumper stickers that read, "Save a whale, harpoon a fat chick," and other distasteful and offensive statements that you would never see at a truly educational aquarium, and which are sending our children a terrible message in how to treat and regard others. Then they see wildlife held in dismal conditions. They say, they see fish in dark, dirty tanks with signs justifying why they never move, with no information about them. Then they are allowed to pay money to, quote, as the sign reads, "Feed the performing seals," as the sign above the seals and sea lion reads. What we are teaching our children is that we can treat animals however we want to, as long as we find, we find it entertaining. We are teaching our children that it's all right to confine wildlife in disturbingly small cages surrounded by nothing more than concrete, chain-link fences, and barbed wire, when seals and sea lions in kept, in, uh, the wild can dive up to depths of fifteen hundred feet and swim seven miles per hour. Why would we teach our children in this community that, especially when... Why would we teach our children in this community that, especially when we could easily go to the bay and see wildlife enjoying their natural habitat? Why would we teach children that capturing seals and sea lions for display and then buying them from SeaWorld, only to keep them in pools so small that they can't even swim, is all right? And yet, the aquarium continues to claim that they provide an education to children in the community. I've spoken to many parents in this community who agree with teachers like me, that this would be teaching their children that it's right to exploit those who are weaker than ourselves for a few dollars. These parents have said that they refuse to take their children to this facility.
Thank you.
I hope you send out the RFPs. Thank you.
Jen... No clapping, please. Let's... Thank you. Mayor, I think it's Mary Thornton, or it's hard to read this one. Mary Thornton or Mary Dorton? Can't get that one. How about Jeanette Bowen? Jeanette Bowen? Then Susan Tripp and Kim O'Brien?
My name is Jeanette Bowen, and I am an animal paramedic. I work around the country, educating children, firemen, first responders of all types about animal, animal care and wellness. I'm also a resident of the Central Coast. I live in Santa Maria. I've worked with the Morro Bay Fire and PD as well. I am here today to speak out against the aquarium. I'd just like to read something that I have written. People talk time and time again about how the opinion of the Morro Bay locals should be the deciding factor as to the future of the Morro Bay Aquarium. Why should people from the, out of the area dictate the fate of the aquarium? The simple fact is that Morro Bay is a tourism town and needs tourism dollars to support its economy. Many visitors who view the aquarium are appalled about the inhumane conditions that the animals are forced to live in. This is the impression that we want the outside world to take away with them? The Morro Bay Aquarium is the home of a dingy, substandard, cramped, and outdated facility posing as a rehab and rescue aquarium. The aquarium is nothing more than a cheap roadside attraction. The seal enclosures are small and need to be enlarged, but all the owners propose to do is simple cosmetic upgrades. This is unacceptable. This facility puts a black eye on the mark of Morro Bay and is bad for tourism. I also have some petitions to hand over here, that we have 1,507 signatures, paper petitions. I know that they also mentioned the change.org positions, which are almost 6,000, and also the causes.org and the YouTube video. We have a total signature of almost 9,000 signatures here. I'm going to hand these over to you. Eighty of these were collected by one of my youth assistants. I work with kids. And this picture that you see up on the screen was drawn by one of my youth assistants, who came out and actually visited the aquarium and wanted me to present this to you. Thank you very much.
Susan Tripp. Then Kim O'Brien and Susan Fortman.
Good evening, my name is Susan Tripp. I live in San Luis Obispo, but I frequent Morro Bay almost every weekend. I love the city of Morro Bay. It's beautiful, and it's drawn visitors from all over the world. Unfortunately, it is also famous for having the worst aquarium in the country. The American Humane Society gets more complaints about this facility than any other zoo or aquarium in America. It does not meet the requirements set by the American Association of Zoos and Aquariums, as has been stated by other speakers. If it were to be built today, it would not be approved the way it is. This facility was initially approved under the Antiquated Animal Welfare Act and grandfathered in under those outdated requirements. Just because a law is old and outdated doesn't mean we need to allow a facility in this town to be. The marine mammals there are deprived of proper nutrition, medical attention, mental stimulus, and social interaction. They cannot even swim. They receive no routine veterinary checkups, no records are kept of how much they eat, and no pinup head there has ever lived to the full lifespan expected in captivity. These are not rehabilitated animals, as the aquarium claims. A rehabilitated animal can survive in the wild. These cannot. They've been too habituated. They need to be found new, healthy homes immediately. Regardless of the future of the Morro Bay Aquarium, the seals need to be relocated to suitable homes as soon as possible. Regardless of the well-meaning and humble beginnings of the facility, it is unconscionable to allow the suffering to continue. The mission statement of the city of Morro Bay says it is dedicated to the preservation and enhancement of quality of life. This is a quality-of-life issue. If we cannot support the quality of life for our animals, how can we say we are a just society? Gandhi said a society is judged by how it treats its animals. Nostalgia is no excuse for keeping this going. It's time for us to rise up, stop living in the past, and demand a good life for the animals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kim O'Brien, Susan Fortman, and Christine Husk.
Kim O'Brien, San Luis Obispo. Welcome, thank you. I'd like to read a letter from Dr. Naomi Rose, who is the Senior Wildlife Scientist from the Humane Society of the United States. It was addressed to you, Mayor Irons, dated May 1st. Dear Mayor Irons, I'm writing on the behalf of more than 11 million supporters of the Humane Society of the United States. It has come to our attention that Morro Bay is considering entering into a new lease for the Morro Bay Aquarium, whose current lease is scheduled to expire in 2018. The Humane Society occasionally receives complaints about, the public, about various animal facilities for domestic and wild animals. These complaints usually focus on poor living conditions, including unsanitary or small enclosures. I have been implementing the Humane Society, the United States Marine Mammal Program for 20 years, and in that time, the Humane Society has received more complaints about the Morro Bay Aquarium than any other marine display facility in the United States. Constituents consistently tell us about the tanks and cages are too small for the seals and that the facilities are old and dirty. We urge you to give serious consideration to allowing the Morro Bay Aquarium's lease to lapse in 2018 and to replace this attraction with a more humane alternative. Seals and sea lions do not thrive in enclosures that do not allow them to exercise adequately or exhibit a natural range of behaviors. Given the aquarium's location on the Central Coast, the best option would be to replace the outdated facility with a modern, on the waterfront. Thank you very much.
Susan Fortman, Christine Husk, Mandy Davis.
My name is Susan Fortman. I live in Morro, I live in Los Osos now. I've been a resident of Morro Bay for almost 40 years. I support the aquarium. As a city, we need to keep the aquarium. Closing the aquarium or selling it to the highest bidder should not even be an option for the city. As a city, we should help the aquarium to continue to be a part of the waterfront. I spoke with Tom Haftor, President of the Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's today. I met him on the telephone. He asked me to tell you that he and the 140 members strong of the Fishermen's Association that every one of them support the aquarium and Dean and Bertha. He's sorry he couldn't be here. He had to fish. I live in Morro Bay, Los Osos area, and I did not sign a petition worldwide. You're going to have to close down a lot of stores for their bumper stickers if you don't like them. That's part of the Embarcadero. I suggest that everybody who has a fish tank, or a dog, or a cat, or a bunny rabbit who likes to run free and wild, y'all need to get rid of them. Thank you for hearing me.
Christine Husk. Please, no applause. Thank you.
I'm Christine Husk, and we will just show you a video.
I actually had to leave the room on that one. I have seen these animals too many times, and it is really quite upsetting for me. I encourage you to go through the RFP process as originally planned and to not allow any more delays. I would like to take the remainder of my two minutes to do this. The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated. I would like you to insert "city" instead of "nation". I would like you to insert "people" instead of "nation". And I want you, for the rest of the two minutes, to sit with that and to understand the gravity and the importance of your decision when it comes to the Morro Bay Aquarium and its continued operation.
If you concluded, Mandy, in your time...
I am not concluded. I will read it to you again.
I will call up Brianna Weiss as next.
If it's necessary. Am I allowed two minutes?
And Lupe Sylvester.
Am I allowed two minutes?
Brianna Weiss and Lupe Sylvester will be next.
Am I allowed two minutes? Am I?
You've concluded your remarks.
No, I have not. This is my remark.
Seals sounding on the video we just watched. We heard music.
I am not finished with my comment. This is my comment. And sit with it for the two minutes. And I will continue to read it, if that's what's necessary. And if you feel uncomfortable, you should.
Brianna Weiss.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Brianna Weiss, and I'm from Arroyo Grande. The world has changed a lot over the past half a century. We, as humans, have come a long way when it comes to treating animals with compassion and respect. However, the Morro Bay Aquarium is still stuck in a world from decades in the past where animals were not protected and cherished. While the rest of the world has progressed, this aquarium has continued to be a place of misery, where beautiful, intelligent animals are abused and exploited as tacky roadside entertainment. I know that I speak for many when I say that it breaks my heart to think of these seals and sea lions, forced to spend their days in shallow bathtubs while listening to the lively barks of their free brothers and sisters in the bay. I don't see how anyone can walk in this place and not feel sick to their stomach. We should know better now. It is our responsibility as humans to treat animals with compassion and love. We are the stewards of this beautiful Central Coast and the abundant marine life, but the Morro Bay Aquarium goes against every ideal that we should be supporting in our community. Every parent who takes their child into this dungeon is teaching them that it is all right to force animals into dirty, cramped spaces, gawking at them while they long only to be able to swim freely as they are meant to. I am asking you to think not only of tourism, of business, or of Morro Bay's reputation, but to listen to your heart. The fate of countless more precious animals lies in your hands, and it would be heartless to renew the lease for this facility. Please listen to what this next generation is trying to tell you, that this antiquated facility is no longer acceptable. And adding another second to this lease would be going against all the progress that humanity has made in the past half a century since the aquarium opened. Thank you.
Lupe Sylvester.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Lupe Sylvester. I live in Morro Bay, and I've lived there since 1967. In 1969, my sister Bertha married Dean Tyler, who owned and operated the Morro Bay Aquarium. Bertha had a restaurant, Chat and Chew. She sold the restaurant in 1973 to help Dean care for the distressed animals that were sick, injured, and abandoned seals, sea lions, and otters. Bertha has always been a very loving and caring person, so she helped Dean with the animals. Many animals made it and were released. The price of admission is low for families that can afford to visit often. Many visitors come to Morro Bay Aquarium, especially to see and feed the seals. Of course, they also enjoy seeing the fish. We know the family that brings their children, then the grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Five generations have been in that aquarium, and they say how beautiful and wonderful that this place is for them to go and visit. Please do not take that away from them. Thank you for listening. Save the aquarium.
Thank you.
Melinda Rice, Edward Sylvester, and Len Whittle?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I support the Tylers.
Can you state your name, please?
Melinda Rice.
Thank you.
I support the Tylers and the Morro Bay Aquarium in renewing the lease. Why? Because as a 13-year resident and also from the valley, coming over here for many years, and my grandchildren coming now, we enjoy going to the aquarium. It is vintage. We love it. The Tylers are certainly an attribute to the community. They draw the tourists in. It's affordable, as others have said. Some of the folks on the opposing side don't even understand that the seals bark. The seals in the aquarium are not barking at night. They're tired from playing and jumping through the hoops and having a great time. They're sleeping. The seals we hear barking are the wild ones down in the water. Yesterday, I was listening to Dave Congleton, and there were some really vicious comments. And I would just want to refute those. The Tylers are not monsters. They are not running a house of horrors. They've got a sweet little establishment there. They care for the fish. They're hand-fed and appropriately cared for. And it sounds to me like they're updating and doing the things that are in the guidelines, and there is oversight. The people on the radio yesterday said that the oversight isn't good. So I say, go after the oversight people. If you don't like what they, what the ordinances or guidelines are, the Tylers are certainly doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's a vintage town. We love it, and we want to keep it that way. We are not the big city, and we don't want to be. That's why we live here. Thank you.
Edward Sylvester, Len Wilite. Len, thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name's Ed Sylvester. I've been here for about 38 years in this town. I don't know, have you ever seen the U.S. Navy with the seals? They live in a lot smaller confinement, cages. When the Navy takes them out to do their bomb exercises, the seals are put on the, on the, on the boats. They are taken out in cages, cages, cages. And they're released, and they go do their duty. And other seals come around, they will not even bother them. They don't want nothing to do with their own kind. They don't want nothing to do with their own kind. They are trained to do a job. Now, and when they come back, do their job, they come back, they jump aboard the boat and they go back into their cages, cages. That's what these people got to remember, cages. And they live their life out or until something explodes on them. Okay, thank you.
Len Willight.
Good evening. My name's Len Willight. I have a business here in town. Lived here for 53 years. I'm on the aquarium's side. I heard a lot of stuff here tonight. And most of what I've heard is very uninformed. And the 50, 60, 70,000 signatures from around the world, it's kind of like some of the signatures that went around from some other things that went and happened here. Anyway, the Tylers care about their animals. They're basically not a rehab center anymore. They stopped that basically years ago. They have a couple they're taking care of now. Those animals are happy. One of them I know came from Florida, I believe it was SeaWorld. If that animal was loose right now, it'd be dead. Couldn't survive. The fish in the tanks, they don't have to worry about being food. Because if they're in the wild, there'd be another one's, you know what? They've got it made there. They set in a corner like all fish do. They're not swimming around all day. Fish don't do that in the wild. These people have devoted their lives to these animals. And for these people, they run on their mouths, the way they're running them is pathetic in my book. They don't have a clue as what they're talking about. Yes, the aquarium could use some upgrades. I think the Tylers agree to that. It's not the best in the world, but it sure as hell ain't no Monterey Aquarium. And if I'm not mistaken, most of the school buses that came through there with all the kids were screaming and yelling unhappy and they come out the same way. Weren't even charged. I think I'm still correct about that. I don't think they even paid a dime. Those people cared about these animals. And here these people run them down, they have no clue. There's disgusting in my book. One of the people here tonight...
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude, Len.
Okay, one of the people here tonight was with a group, just wanted for murder. And you listened to what she had to say.
I'm going to have to conclude. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tora Rex, Patty James. Laura Rex, Patty James, and Hunter Kilpatrick. Patty James. And then Hunter Kilpatrick.
Good evening. My name is Patty James. I am now a resident of La Sosa, but I was formerly a resident of Morro Bay some years ago. I want to speak in favor of the aquarium. I've known Bertha and Dean for quite some time and I have been visiting the aquarium for quite some time. I do agree with some of these people that say that there needs to be some upgrades, but you can't tell me that those seals and sea lions are unhappy there. How can anybody say that they're unhappy there? Because they don't know. They're not a seal or a sea lion. And I can tell you that my daughter was very happy visiting there when she was little. My grandchildren are very happy going there. And I hope that the aquarium is there long enough and that I live long enough to take my great-grandchildren there. And when my grandchildren come here, almost every time they come to visit me, they now live in Fresno. I must have the only child that grew up on the coast and moved to Fresno instead. But they go to the aquarium almost every time they're here. Their other grandparents live in the Monterey area. They can't afford to go there every time, but they can afford to come to our aquarium every time. And I hope you will vote to keep it here. Thank you.
Hunter Kilpatrick. Claudia Faraday. And Liz Osha.
Good evening, members of the Council. My name is Hunter Kilpatrick, resident of Morro Bay. Next year, we will be celebrating Morro Bay's golden birthday. We have a golden opportunity right now to begin work on a new project to bring Morro Bay into the 21st century with a new marine education facility. In 1968, the Morro Bay Aquarium operated as a rehab and education facility. Morro Bay was a new city and this aquarium was good for our growth and tourism. This was a time when we still drove at will on the dunes. We dumped nuclear waste and our trash into the oceans and we used DDT. This was before the first Earth Day brought awareness to the damage we were doing to our environment. We were capturing wild orcas for entertainment. We were dragging the ocean floors for all its bounty. We were building small aquariums and viewing pools. In 1968, we didn't have the Marine Mammal Protection Act. We didn't have the Marine Mammal Rescue Center. We were watching Flipper, driving muscle cars and leaving our lights on all night. We weren't recycling. We weren't caring for our planet and had little knowledge of the care and rehabilitation for its animals. We almost destroyed the peregrine falcons, condors, sea otters, and many other species. Since 1968, we have seen the return of these animals and the elephant seals. We have learned greatly of the proper ways to care for our environment and animal friends. We are reducing the use of plastic bags and single-use plastics. We have stopped high-energy seismic testing. We have stopped the expansion of offshore oil drilling. We have stopped polluting our seas and found ways for sustainable harvesting. We have learned how to protect and care for our marine mammals and we have learned that our old ways were wrong. Since 1968, we have learned how to care for our planet. I thank the family that has operated the aquarium for all these years, but I now urge the city of Morro Bay to take this opportunity to provide proper care for our wet friends. It is time for this facility to close and the city to work toward a feasibility study on a new marine education facility and aquarium. It is time to not renew this lease as proposed and to submit an RFP for the future of that site. This is a golden opportunity for Morro Bay. Don't let it slip away from us.
Claudia Faraday. Liz Osha. And Deborah Hesch.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Claudia Faraday. I live in San Luis Obispo, formerly of Morro Bay. I'm here as a member of the public who is against the lease renewal for the Morro Bay Aquarium. I attended the city council meeting here on March 25th when facts about the Tideland's properties and leases were presented. Based on that information, along with the city of Morro Bay Harbor Department lease management policy, which is on the city's website, I learned that while the city controls the Tideland's properties and the Harbor Department manages the leases, the land is held in public trust by the state and is intended to benefit the public with good-use community projects and is specifically intended to not benefit private enterprise. I would like to read some of the language in the city's lease management policy as a matter of record. Regarding the Tideland's lease renewals, the city's policy reads in part, "The practice of the city in the past has been to automatically renew or renegotiate a lease with an existing tenant. This has led to a false sense of private ownership of the lease site and sometimes leads to tenants not maintaining the leases or reconstructing prior to the expiration of a given term. In some cases, the city should not renew a lease, either for the purpose of consolidating sites or to pursue other extenuating public benefit." Regarding pipkin leases, the city's policy reads in part, "The city has many long-term ground leases known as the county or pipkin leases, which I believe the Morro Bay Aquarium is one. These provide low rent in exchange for tenant investment or settlement of previous disputes. These long-term leases provide that the tenant constructed improvements revert to city ownership upon lease termination, and this was a critical part of the consideration in allowing the tenant such a long-term lease at the specified rents. The county and pipkin leases were 50-year leases. The city shall encourage tenants to renegotiate these leases into the city master lease format well before the termination date of that lease."
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude, please.
I'm here as a member of the public, asking you to consider the public benefit for this facility and to respectfully ask you to send RFPs to the public so that a more beneficial, educational, and worthwhile facility can be developed. Thank you.
Liz Osha.
Yeah, hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Liz Ochoa, so you got it close.
Okay, thanks.
And I actually live in Napa, but I lived in Morro Bay for over 40 years. And so I just wanted you to know that as a young girl through school, that we would go on field trips to the Morro Bay Aquarium. And I remember that not only myself, but the other children, just being all wide-eyed, seeing all the sea animals and fish up close. And then afterwards in class, looking up interesting facts and writing about the whole wonderful experience. And we know now with school budgets and cutbacks that everything that we have that's available for children is needed. And my own daughter, she's, well, I won't tell you, she's an adult. I won't tell you her age because then you would guess mine. But she went to the Morro Bay Aquarium when she was also in school and so did my nieces and my nephews and now my grand-nephews and my grandnieces, within probably a year or two, will be going too. The educational benefits for children and adults going to an aquarium are tremendous. Aquariums are a teaching tool. You learn directly from the experience and interactions. Parents and educators have a huge opportunity to teach about science, like the food chain and the water environment, and in turn, children are more eager to ask questions, read, and write, which is what our goal is for kids to do, is always ask questions and get answers for them. The numerous studies have shown that aquariums give children and adults alike a feeling of calm by observing and watching them. This in turn reduces anxiety. I think we can all reduce our blood pressure. Many dentists and doctors have small aquariums due to these same reasons. It is a terrific health benefit. So I believe that we are very lucky and fortunate that we have our own aquarium right here on the central coast. For those that are concerned that the animals have been neglected, it is just simply untrue.
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude.
Okay. I just want you to know that I know from personal experience that they are well-cared-for and that Bertha and Dean are very, and have been for many years, very diligent. And I thank you for hearing.
Thank you. Deborah Hesch. And then Karen Crowley. Don't see Deborah. Karen out there.
I'm Deborah Hesch. I've lived here for 49 years. I do work at the aquarium. I write the checks. So I want to just make a few points. The bottom line is, my aunt and uncle have had this business since 1959. They're the ones that have brought all the revenue to the city. They've been excellent leaseholders. Just about every tourist that comes to town probably visits the aquarium, I'm sure. I don't know any other business that brings that much foot traffic in. And everyone who has gotten up here and spoken against it, I'm not aware. I don't think any of them have lived on the, worked and lived on the ocean. There's people here, Dean Tyler, Steve Reebuck, Ed Sylvester. You put these people, their experience together. You have like 200 years of ocean living and working. They know what they're talking about. It's an incredible wealth of knowledge they have and practical experience. So I just, I want to say that the $2 admission will not pay for extravagant, you know, rehabilitation of the building and stuff. And I think you're all aware of that from going there and seeing it yourself. And there's not a whole lot of room there to work with. So I just want to say, I hope that you will renew the lease for 10 years and give everybody time to think about what you want to do. Let ideas evolve and maybe something wonderful will come out of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen Crowley. There she is. Lucille Craig would be next.
Hi, my name is Karen Crowley. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a Morro Bay resident of 18 years. And I just want to make a couple of quick points. In the 18 years that I've been a resident and a homeowner, I've made the time to make improvements and upgrades in my home because I love my home. And I remember visiting the aquarium when I first got here 18 years ago and just recently. And I have not seen any visible upgrades or improvements. So that makes me wonder, I don't understand that. Another point I wanted to make was the letter from the Animal Control Services. I saw the letter and there's six points of contention on that letter. Makes some really great points. Most importantly, my 14-and-a-half-year-old son would also like to say something.
Hi, I'm Nico Yaroslavsky and me and my brothers have been going to the aquarium ever since we were born and we all agreed that we really don't like it that much. And everyone has been saying how seals have been in small aquariums and stuff like that. Just because the seals have been in small aquariums, does that make it okay for our aquarium for them to be in small aquariums? That makes no sense. And then also, why do we need aquarium when you could walk right around the block and see sea lions just right there? You don't need an aquarium.
So with every cryo sister's opportunity, and we would like to make this an opportunity for improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucille Craig. Nina Stevens would be next.
Lucille Craig, Morro Bay. And my opinions are the same of those that are against the aquarium. Much joy has been derived from it in the past, but I think it's time to give some joy to the marine life that are imprisoned there.
Thank you. Last, we have Nina Stevens. Nina Stevens, okay. We have Bertha Tyler and then Tave Holland. Bertha?
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Bertha Tyler from the aquarium. And I just want to let you know that all the people that come into the aquarium, we do have a small petition that says, "We need your opinion." And the people that are coming in there and going through the aquarium are people that come in over and over. They're not visiting once, but they visit so many times that they say they really love the aquarium. And they wouldn't say that to me if it wasn't so. So altogether now, we have a little over 13,000 signatures of people that have come into the aquarium. And I have the proof. If you need to see it, I will bring it in. But that's what it is. And so I know a lot of people that, from the organization of PETA, gets the idea where they're told this and that. It's not right, it's not right. But it's not so. I know because I worked there and I've worked with the animals and we released a lot of them. I think we took care of over 90 animals and we released a lot of them. And we had about four of them come back over and over and we chased them away and they still come back. So that tells me that they love the place right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Tave Holland.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable Council members and staff. My name is Tave Holland. I do represent the Tylers. And I think I'd like to just make a few closing remarks for tonight. Clearly, the aquarium creates a lot of controversy. I think that's good. I think that there should be robust debate about how we treat wildlife. And I think what you see here tonight is really a good example of democracy in action and altogether, it's a positive thing. But I would like to bring you back to a few fundamental points, one of which is, what's asked to be decided tonight is not whether to give a lease to the Tylers or to not give them a lease, but should you give them a little more time to work with city, work with city staff to come up with a plan that perhaps could satisfy the needs and the desires of the future of the site? I think the Tylers understand that the proposals that have been put forward need work, but they'd like a little time and a little consideration in order to work with you to get that. I think whatever else can be said, reasonable minds and people of goodwill can differ on the treatment of these animals and whether this aquarium is currently a good fit for the city. But I don't think anyone can say in good faith that these people, Dean and Bertha Tyler, have not been ideal citizens of Morro Bay, that they have not been dedicated to this city, and that they haven't earned the right to have a little consideration from the city as well. And so I would ask you to take a little extra time, allow them to work with the city staff, allow them to help come up with some new ideas, work with your professional staff, and see if something can't be brought forward that really does work for the city and everyone. With that, I'll close and I'll close with that.
Thank you.
But ask again for your consideration.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
With that, that's all of our speaker slips. With that, that's all of our speaker slips, and that would close public comment, unless there's anyone out there that has come in late that would want to speak. I'm going to close public comment at this point. Come on.
I have my name up there. Tom Rex.
Come on up.
It's up there. I thought you said Laura Rex.
Pardon me for mispronouncing your name.
That's all right. Mayor, all the city. I don't have a bunch of papers. I don't have degrees on my name, but I live here in Morro Bay. I've lived here for three years. Prior to that, I was raised in Grover Beach. At that time, it was Grover City. And my daughters both live over in the valley. They come over and see the aquarium. I didn't realize there was so many seal and octopus and fish whisperers here, you know, that know what these things think. I go down there a lot. I know Dean and Bertha very well, and they sure look happy to me. You know, my kids, I have little grandkids, one that, she's really into horses, and when I want to know if, what a horse is, I go to the person that takes care of it. If I want to know if the SEALs are happy, I go to Bertha. She takes care of them. Other people walk in and say, "My goodness, this is really bad." But nobody knows what they're thinking, and the proof is, they've let them go and they keep coming back. I'm sure there's a medical reason for that, but in my opinion, we should keep the aquarium and help it to get along. The other thing is, I intend to stay here, and I vote. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Betty Winholz. I'd just like to make two responses. I think the man makes a good point. We don't know what those animals think, but neither do we know that they're comfortable. Just because you return to a place, you don't know if it's because you're hungry or if because you're happy. And the second point I would do is respond to the attorney and say, everyone has another few years if the RFP goes out, including the Tyler's. There really doesn't need to be a ten-year extension.
No applause, please. Thank you. And with that, if there... I'm going to close public comment here after this speaker. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Hi, my name is Leo Danmamos. I've been almost like three years living here in Morro Bay. The Morro Bay Aquarium is awesome. Every year, my family, especially my nieces, my nephews, my cousins, and even my little cousins, second cousins, third cousins, like to go and feed the SEALs. They love it. And me, when I go and feed them, they make me laugh with joy because they are so adorable. Especially the one that claps his hands and goes, "Ooh, ooh, ooh, ooh." Always does that. It's so cute. I love that one. These awesome-looking fish and crabs and octopus look so cool in the aquarium, because it's like they're 3D, and it's like, wow, I've never seen something like this before. Even my nieces, someone's like, "Wow, you're so cool, dear. You're so cool, uncle." And I want to live out here now, so, okay, in time. And then after, according to aquarium, there's a gift shop, you know, a great souvenir place to buy things and a perfect price, and you know, you can enjoy them at home and remember the experience you have at the Morro Bay Aquarium. And having the Morro Bay Aquarium attracts out-of-towners to visit and make Morro Bay a more funner place, a more friendly place to come and visit. If people, there's no abuse, none of that stuff that they're said. It's just lies, and I go there every week, and they just, they are so lovable, and they are happy, and they are well-fed. Even the fish and the octopus and all those crabs-looking things, you know, I've never seen before, they get fed well. And to leave it in your hands, this is on your hands, you guys. And I want to say thank you for everything, and God bless you.
Good night. Sir?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff, and everybody, my name is Oliver Hopkin, just plain old hoppy around town. And I remember when Dean Biff bought that place way back under, and he worked outside that Diablo Canyon as a welder to help pay for it and get it going. If a lot of these people that is talking against the aquarium would have seen it in them days and seen what he has done to it since then, they wouldn't even believe it. But he did a wonderful job, and those two people, they have their heart all the way in that place, and they always have had. I remember the time when they had sea otters up there to rehabilitate them, and if you can't think that they can make pets out of them, you're crazy. But I'm all for the aquarium. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Thanks for everybody for sticking it out and coming up, coming out tonight. I'd like to take a break, but I think we should keep going. Are there any comments there? Keep going. Do you need a quick break? Can we take, we'll take a five-minute recess, a quick five-minute recess, and then we'll come back.